Ladies and gentlemen, if we could come to order. Having been advised by the town clerk Susan Galvin, the majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business and the meeting is now open. In keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Will the membership please rise, stand, and join with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would just remain standing for a minute, we have some singers from our Milton High School Music Department who are going to lead us in our national anthem. They're the Band With No Name tonight. CDs and t-shirts for sale after the town meeting tonight. The meeting will now open with an invocation by the Reverend R.G. Wilson Lyons of the First Congregational Church of Milton. Reverend Wilson Lyons.
Thank you. I am honored to offer our prayer for tonight's town meeting, and as an introduction to prayer, I share this quote from 18th-century British theologian John Wesley. Though we may not think alike, may we love alike; may we be of one heart, though we are not of one opinion. Let us pray. Oh God, as we have gathered together to conduct the business of our town, we pause to take a breath. May we enter into this time with a spirit of gratitude, for all who give of themselves for the betterment of our town, for first responders, for educators, for healthcare workers, for public servants, and for each person here tonight. May we enter into this time with a spirit of humility and openness, so that we might hear other perspectives. May we enter into this time with a spirit of compassion, trusting that each person here loves this town, even and especially if we find ourselves in moments of disagreement and conflict. May we enter into this time with a spirit of respect, as we assume the best intentions of each member. And most of all, may we remember that no matter what happens over the next few days, that we are all part of the same town. We entered this room as neighbors, and we will leave this room as neighbors. May everything we do and say at this year's town meeting be done in the spirit of community and neighborliness, so that even if we don't always think alike, we may love alike. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Wilson Lyons. And I'll ask our newly-elected, re-elected town clerk, Ms. Susan Galvin, to swear in the members. Ms. Galvin? If all the town meeting members would please stand.
Good evening, and thank you. If everybody could raise their right hand. Do you solemnly swear to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as a town meeting member, to bear true faith and allegiance to, and uphold and defend, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the town of Milton, and to fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof, within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction, so help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
And would all the newly-elected town meeting members and elected officials remain standing for a minute? We can just look around and perhaps congratulate our new citizens in their new office. Now, I typically read off the list of members with long terms of service, so tonight, I'd like to recognize with 10 years of service, we have Mr. John Cochran from Precinct 5, Lee Michael McLean from Precinct 10, Stephen Pender from Precinct 8, Christine Stanton from Precinct 5, and Richard Wells from Precinct 7. At 15 years, we have Carolyn Cahill from Precinct 1, Margaret Carrolls, if I can pronounce that right, from Precinct 4, Harriet Manning from Precinct 4, and Deborah Milbauer from Precinct 4. We also have, I'll just note, we had a member that would have been 18 years today, Ms. Virginia King, but she didn't get her due, she did not, was not re-elected, but Virginia King was 18 years from Precinct 3. We have 20 years, Diane Coligan, Precinct 8, Mary Keely, Precinct 10, Brian Keely, Precinct 7, Glenn Pavlicek from Precinct 10 at 25 years, and then Mr. Paul Needham, who was also not re-elected, but he has served 47 years. Just wanted to acknowledge the long years of service for all you town meeting members that have been helping your town. And just some facts from our town clerk. We have members who have been served 63 years include one, Ms. Merida Manning Cronin. We have six members who were 41 to 48 years, 12 members who were 31 to 39, 27 members who were 20 to 29, 45 members who were 10 to 19 years, 46 members who were 5 or 9, and 142 four or less. So about half our town meeting members are four or less, round numbers. So thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm pleased to report that since our last meeting in February, we have lost no elected officials or town meeting members from our ranks, so everyone has survived in the next meeting, so. Thank you. Applaud yourself for all being alive. That's right. By the way, we will be joined a little bit later by Congressman Lynch. He's running a little late, he's trying to cover a lot of town meetings tonight, I think he gets here like 8:15 or so. We'll just acknowledge his presence, and he'll, just wanted to say hello. And if you, would permit me, our recent political environment has been so active over the last few months, I wanted to offer my own attempt at humor reconciliation, be kind. We are a town divided. I think you know it's true. We are not alone in this, our country is divided too. It crosses generations ignoring race, creed, or sex, although the problem's simple, compromise is complex. You probably wonder where I'm headed, what is his promoting? Enough with all of this delay, it's time we started voting. Weekly, every home and hearth requires a decision, and causing, discovering a neighbor's choice causes laughter and derision. Yet it could be an example how to bridge that which divides if, for just a single month, each group tried switching sides. We have a long tradition, town meeting uses to take a poll. When a vote is undeclared, then we call out for the roll. Next time you have to make this choice, try the other's point of view. When standing there with roll in hand, walk a mile in the other shoe. If your tribe pulls from the top, try it from the bottom. You'll see that the other side's solution is equally awesome. My idea won't solve every issue that causes anger and frustration, but when it comes to toilet tissue, we could live as a united nation. Thank you very much. First, before proceeding with the business of the meeting, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. Permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, Board of Health, and other boards, committees, and departments, who are not town meeting members, to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Access TV to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there are two side aisle microphones, each with three seats at the front row reserved for those waiting to be recognized to speak. I can review briefly the rules, particularly for the benefit of newer town meeting members, some of the procedural rules for the conduct of the meeting, which unless there is an objection will be the rules for the conduct of this meeting. I'll now review them briefly. First, town meeting members are required to check in with the town clerk and to be seated in the lower part of the auditorium, which is demarcated and reserved for town meeting members. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members are required to be seated in the upper part of the auditorium. If you are a town meeting member, you don't have your voting clicker, you've not checked in, and we don't know you're here. So if you're a town meeting member, let's make sure you have your clickers, we'll do a test vote later. Second, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first go to the nearest microphone, and upon being recognized by the moderator, will identify herself, himself, by giving his or her name and precinct. If you've not been recognized by the moderator, you are not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article, and while your moderator will attempt to remember the desires to be recognized on an article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to go to a microphone and wait to be recognized. Third, by longstanding tradition, while any other registered voter of the town who is not a town meeting member may not vote here at town meeting, he or she may be recognized to address town meeting, provided that the voter in advance of the particular session has obtained permission from the moderator. Note, we do have citizens tonight who have sought and been granted permission to speak during this meeting. Fourth, any person having a monetary or equitable interest in, or is employed as an attorney or otherwise by any other person interested in, any matter under discussion shall disclose the fact of his or her interests or employment before speaking thereon. Fifth, with reference to each article in the warrant, the recommendation of the warrant committee shall ordinarily be considered to have been presented in the form of a motion by the chairperson, which has been seconded by the secretary or other member of the warrant committee who is a town meeting member. Unless the moderator otherwise expressly states at the time, the question to be voted on under each article will usually be whether or not to accept the recommendation of the warrant committee. In other words, generally the recommendation of the warrant committee is the main motion pending under the article. In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article, i.e. members will vote yes if they favor the article, and no if they oppose the article. I'll go over that again when we get to those particular articles. Six, pursuant to Section 4 of Chapter 2 of the town's bylaws, the moderator requires that all substantive or complex motions be reduced to writing and presented to the moderator before submission to the meeting. Seven, by longstanding tradition, Town Meeting Time, which is this, A Handbook of Parliamentary Law, 3rd Edition, will, in addition to the bylaws of the town of Milton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, be the rules of order for this meeting. Eighth, any member desiring to show slides, make a PowerPoint presentation, or any other visual material before the meeting, must make appropriate arrangements and inform the moderator. Nine, members are urged to obtain all information needed by them prior to the meeting. However, by tradition, the moderator will recognize any town meeting member for the purpose of requesting additional information relevant to the matter and under consideration. All such requests must be directed solely to the moderator, who will attempt to ascertain the most appropriate official who should answer such an inquiry. Answers will not be provided while the member still has the floor, in order to prevent the temptation to cross-examine the person providing the information, which is not permitted. However, the moderator will separately recognize a member once, for the purpose of posing a follow-up question. Sometimes the information is not available, or is not immediately available, and the request for information will simply not be fulfilled. Ten, when the moderator, when it's announced by the moderator that the meeting will proceed to vote, debate will be closed and the pending question will be put to the town meeting. Eleven, upon taking the question, the sense of the meeting shall be taken by the voices of the town meeting members, and the moderator shall first announce the vote as it appears to him by the sound. If the moderator is unable to decide the sound of the voices, or if his announcement made thereupon is doubted by seven town meeting members arising in their places for that purpose, the moderator shall request the town meeting members to be seated and shall appoint tellers. The question shall then be distinctly stated, and those in the affirmative and negative respectively shall be requested to rise and stand in their places, until they are counted by the tellers, who shall then report to the moderator, who thereupon shall announce the vote. If the vote is further doubted, and 25 town meeting members arise in their places and ask for a division of the meeting by the taking of the yays and the nays, then the roll of the meeting shall be called in alphabetical order by the town clerk, and each town meeting member shall rise in his place if he/she answers yea or nay when their name is called, and the moderator shall announce the vote. No town meeting member shall be allowed to vote after the vote is declared. This important new addition, when an electronic voting system approved by the moderator is in use, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will determine by electronic vote the sense of the meeting and shall announce the vote as displayed by the electronic voting system. No town meeting member should be allowed to vote after that vote is declared. Just some commentary, this last sentence eliminated the standing and roll call vote from the process from our bylaws a few town meetings ago. The standing and roll call language is there in the event that the electronic voting system fails. In other words, we have a backup voting method. Consulted with town council, we've reviewed the recordings of the meetings when we adopted electronic voting, and we concur that this was stated clearly during the debate, and the updated rule was adopted, 87% to 13%. So to reinstate a voting challenge would require a bylaw change, which is not contained in our warrant. But if I see seven members stand up after a vote, we'll stop and we'll display the online roll of everyone who voted, otherwise we'll proceed. So if seven people stand up, we'll stop and we'll display however everybody voted, otherwise we'll move on. Twelve, no vote shall be reconsidered at the same meeting except upon a motion made within one hour of the adoption of such vote, unless by two-thirds vote, provided that the time which elapses during any adjournment of the meeting shall be excluded. Thirteenth, because the constraints of state law pursuant to Prop. 2 and 1/2, the budget articles as recommended by the warrant committee to this town meeting are at the maximum tax levy limitation permitted by state law pursuant to Prop. 2 and 1/2. While the moderator will entertain motions to amend budget articles upward, the town's total appropriation may not exceed the proposition 2 and 1/2 limit, thus to avoid potential chaos and the necessity for additional meetings to balance the town's appropriation within the levy limit on the amount of revenue that the town may raise by property tax. Your moderator both urges and expects that any member offering an upward amendment to a budget article will also, for the benefit of fellow town meeting members, specify an offsetting decrease in some other line item, or specify what additional source of revenue is or will be available. In addition, it is also permissible to make increased funding subject to an override ballot by the registered voters of the town. Fourteen, each person speaking to an article or amendment is limited to 10 minutes, and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard, or more than twice on the same question without permission of the town moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to 10 minutes at the discretion of the moderator. Fifteen, the consent agenda rule, at least five days prior to the opening of the first annual session of the annual town meeting, or any special town meeting, the moderator may propose to all members a consent agenda, listing all the articles which, based on the records of recent town meetings, the moderator deems to be non-controversial. At the first section of the meeting, at the request of any five members present, any article shall be removed from the consent agenda so that it can be debated and voted upon in accordance with the provisions of Town Meeting Rules. A member requesting to remove an article from the consent agenda may state the reasons for the request without debate. All articles remaining in the consent agenda shall then be voted upon without debate with a two-third required for adoption. So when we get to that, all I'll look for are hands raised, and if I see five hands raised, you don't need to present a reason, you don't need to make a debate, we'll just strike that from the consent agenda, we'll put it back in the regular order of business, and then deal with it as we get to it. Unless there is an objection, these will be the procedural rules for the meeting. Now, certain matters coming before the town meeting require a two-thirds vote, in accordance with Chapter 4, 4/8 of the Acts of 1996, I'll entertain the following procedural motion, which allows the moderator to declare that a two-thirds majority vote has occurred. The motion is, on matters requiring a two-thirds vote, by statute, account need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more moderators, pardon me, more voters, as provided in General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 15. Will someone say so moved? Thank you, is there a second? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion's unanimous. The motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Diana Tulio Agostino, Precinct 9, and I rise regarding, if we could please review, I heard your edit, because when I read the rule, Rule Number 11 pertaining to electronic voting devices.
Yep.
You entered, you added to this section right before, no town meeting member shall be allowed to vote after the vote's declared, a sentence regarding the scroll-through that we originally, you exhibited it, and I think with so many new town meeting members, it would be good to exhibit it as well, has, if you could slowly repeat what you added in there, because.
Sure.
I would like that, and then I have one question to it.
As I said, if I, we've had some questions over the last couple of years of doing this, will we show the vote on every single article? It's very time-consuming to scroll through 288 names. So I've said, since usually the votes are not contested, let's replace the request for a standing count of seven people rising in their place with just a request to stop and show the names. And so if seven people stand up at the end of a vote, I'll look around, then we'll, I'll ask Mr. Mallett, who's running the screen, to display how everyone voted. Is that clear?
Thank you very much for clarifying, and hopefully next year it'll be identified as a line item, an extra sentence under the rule. And I have done further research on the matter of what makes the electronic voting devices public or not public, which we're not going to get into that, except for the fact that the lawyers at the State House notified me that when they approved the use of electronic voting devices at town meeting, they forgot to amend the public records law to stipulate which are actually public records and which aren't. And then they suggested that I work to get that amended, so that's on the back burner right now. However, when we, if, if there's a hot topic that's been discussed, we'd appreciate if people are given the time to stand. Some people have difficulty standing, others have, so, I mean, there was an issue one night, we ended up adjourning, so that, you know.
Understood.
Remember, so I'd greatly appreciate.
Understood.
For everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't just vote the consent agenda, did we?
No, we didn't.
Did.
We do have several articles that will require a two-thirds vote, I'll inform you of those before we vote on the motions. Now, as you no doubt discovered, that we do have electronic voting in place tonight, Mr. Mallett, our town's IT director, sitting to my left, will operate the electronic voting technology. It's pretty simple, at the conclusion of an article's discussion, instead of calling for a voice vote, I'll call for an electronic vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor will press the yes button, and all opposed will press the no button, and all those abstaining may either hit abstain or press nothing. It has the same effect. I'll wait 45 seconds for voting. You can change your vote during the 45-second voting period. When I call for closing the vote, Mr. Mallett will turn off the vote data collection, and I'll present the results on the screen. I'll read aloud both the percent and the numerical vote count, so that the town clerk can record them for the record. And I'll only include the yes and no votes in the vote total. We've never included abstentions in our history, so we only will include the yes and no votes. In accordance with our bylaws and traditions, abstentions and non-votes will be excluded. We'll now run a test vote before the official vote on Article 1. Are there any questions about electronic voting before we run the test vote? By the way, just to note, if you start touching buttons on your device, other than yes, no, abstain, you could be reprogramming the radio channel of your clicker, and it won't talk to the receiver we have up here. So this should work when you see the, the number you press light up and your device will show, show green. That means you got a confirmation back from the voting technology that we got your vote. But if you've been pressing buttons, this is why we're going to do a test, then please, if you don't, if you don't see your vote and we come up and do this, we'll reset your technology, and then we'll try it again to make sure everybody's got a working device. So with that, Mr. Mallett, you want to put up the test? Okay. So, I'll now open the vote. Does apple pie taste better than blueberry pie? All in favor, please say yes, all opposed, no, abstain, please say abstain. We'll close the vote. So, apple pie wins by a slim majority of 118 to 199. Now, did anyone not light up or see any problem with their technology? Mr. Mallett, why don't we display the actual results, and let's check to make sure you see your name flash up, and you'll see how long it takes to run through the list of however many members we have tonight. If you don't see your name, then just walk up to Mr. Mallett. All right, everybody satisfied except for just one? We'll fix one item and then we'll carry on. Ms. Hodlin, do you mind if we proceed with a presentation by the warrant committee chair while you're addressing this? With that, we'll now begin with a presentation from the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Mr. David Humphries. Actually, pause, Mr. Humphries, if you could pause a minute. I actually did want to recognize Mr. Richard Wells, our new Chair of the Select Board, for a brief remark. Mr. Wells?
That's good, if I fall down right away, that'd be really good. Good evening, Richard Wells, town meeting member, Precinct 7, the new Chair of the Warrant Committee. All right, select board, whatever I am. See, you're all on your toes. We're ready to go, Mr. Moderator, they passed. No, seriously, I, I, I want to begin by referring to the remarks of the Reverend when he talked about, we may not always like each other, or we may not always like a decision, we do share a love. I got you, Barbara, I'm picking it up. Have to get used to being up here. We do share a love, all of us, of the community that we live in. For hundreds of years, people have been gathering in this body, be it in the old Pierce Middle School, to here to the old original town hall on Cand Avenue, to try and make decisions and voice votes, to make the community that they live in and care about better. But among that cadre of residents come individuals like yourselves, who have the courage to make the decision to run for public office. And in many cases, it's people who choose to run for higher office. And so tonight, as chair of the select board, I want to take this opportunity to thank our former colleague, the former chair of this body, Michael Zulus, for his service to this town. Michael has served in the trifecta of public bodies, not just as a town meeting member. He served on the warrant committee, he served on the school committee, he served as chair of the school committee, as well as serving on this body here for many years, in many terms, serving as chair twice or three times, Michael, might have been three. I usually like to sit at the end of the table, you know how I am, but like, on multiple occasions. So, Michael, thank you so much for your service to this town I know won't end, and I leave you with this as a father. The winners are your daughters, because they now have their dead, and many more nights that you have sacrificed being with them to care for the people who love this town. Thank you so much. Thank you all, God bless.
Did you also want to recognize your new fellow warrant committee member over there?
I should have gone in service for this role. We also want to welcome tonight our newest member, from my own precinct, precinct seven, John Cohane, as his first night as a member of the select board. Although we told him tonight what the pay is, I'm not sure he'll be back tomorrow night, but hopefully. Thank you, thank you, John, thank you all.
Thank you, Chair Wells. We'll now recognize Mr. Humphreys, chair of the warrant committee.
I am Dave Humphreys, and I am the chairman of the warrant committee. When I was on the phone with Amanda Sario, congratulating her on her election to the school committee, you know, we talked a little bit about our time on the warrant committee and our time in this town, and how we've had an opportunity to, to, to meet so many people. And when you talk to somebody in their kitchen, or at one of the businesses in town, when you talk to somebody at the businesses in town, you quickly realize how much you have in common, how everybody lived in Washington DC at some point, and on, and on, and on. It's like that seven degrees of Kevin Bacon, is that really, we are all good people, we really are. And it was, it was, I often think about Rodney King when he said, why can't we all just get along? Because we can, we can. So, to the warrant, I'll be brief. In our report, we talk about the finances of the town first. You will notice that the articles that are contained in this warrant and the budget that are reflected therein reflect a level year-to-year service funding, level year-to-year. There were some ways that that was able to happen, and there's a note that no supplemental requests from any budget, any budget, were met, adding up to approximately $3.2 million. And additional requests, needs-based requests that were made by departments that are not met here. I note that there had been discussion of a budget override, that we might have been considered for this year. We're raising that caution, you know, once again, as we go into this budget, the warrant committee is in support of this budget, our recommendations are here. I just wanted to point that out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Richard Wells, chair of the select board. Now I'm getting on a roll here. I also wanted to thank, because many people here wouldn't realize it, but the elected body, school committee planning board, the warrant committee, will remember that, and will be aware that far, as many years as, and former members of this other boards, as well as our board, will remember that far, many years, up until just 10 days ago, a veteran news reporter from the Patriot Ledger named Fred Hanson, who has covered this town for more years than I can remember, died suddenly last week as he was going in to cover a school committee meeting in Braintree Town Hall. Fred loved the news, if those of you have ever had a chance to talk to him, be interview him, interview him, physically, he was bigger than life, he had tremendous wit, and he had tremendous love of local government. And I just ask tonight that, before we begin, that we take a moment of silence to remember a veteran reporter who spent so many years reporting on the business of the town of Milton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Chair Wells. We'll now proceed to your consent agenda. There were handouts up here on the table, if you want a handout, we're also going to display them up on the board, so, Madam Warrant Committee Clerk, if we could put up the consent agenda. So again, what I'll do, I'll just quickly call out each article. If I see any five hands wish to strike an article, we'll just strike it from the consent agenda. I'll proceed to the next, we'll go through the whole list. At the end, I'll recap what is in, and then we'll vote on the consent agenda, and it requires a two-thirds vote. Anything you strike out, we'll cover in the normal sequential order of business. So with that, Article Two, authorized treasurer to collect taxes. I see no objection. Article Three, authorized treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. I see no objection. Article Five, audit appropriation. I see no objection. Article Eight, unemployment appropriation. I see no objection. Article Nine, Chapter Thirteen, position classifications and wage increases.
Mr. Moderator, Diane, Diane DiTullio Agostino, chair of the Milton Commission on Disability, and also asking, has a town meeting member of precinct nine. I have asked multiple areas in the town, where, which of these articles, and it may be this one, but it's not listed, and on page nine of the warrant, there is no longer the, an individual identified as the ADA coordinator, which is federally required.
Ma'am, I don't want to get into a debate, if you want to-
No, I'm not, I'm asking a question. I need-
This is not the time to ask questions, we're just trying to find out, no, if you want to ask a question, we'll strike the article, and then we'll address it then.
I don't know which article it is. I need to know what article funds the ADA coordinator that's federally required, and what article funds the purchasing agent. Those are too basic, we always had them in our appropriations. One of them left last May, one of them left two and a half years ago. I don't know which of these articles to contest. I mean, it's a simple question.
This is the kind of thing you could have asked me in advance, Ms. Agostino-
I have been asking for weeks, I've-
Well, I haven't received that request. In any case, let's see, warrant committee chair, or Chair Wells, do you know the answer to that question? Which article funds the ADA coordinator and the, the purchasing agent?
So, Mr., thank you, Mr. Moderator. Currently, at this time, that role is filled by the town administrator, and there is no fiduciary assignment to it at all. He covers it as part of his duties and responsibilities.
So that would be general government?
Yes.
Which is number 11. And the ADA coordinator?
I believe both of those, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, so they're covered under general government. Okay. Then I'm on number nine, I didn't see any objection to number nine. Correct? Very good. No objection. Number 10, public safety appropriation. I see no objection. Number 11, general government appropriation. You just, I see five hands. All you have to do is raise your hand, and I see it. All right, we'll strike general government, very good. Number 12, boards and committees appropriation. I see no objection. Number 15, public works appropriation. I see no objection. Number 16, water enterprise fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 17, sewer enterprise fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 18, stormwater enterprise fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 19, chapter 90 appropriations. I see one, two, three. I see objections, okay. Chapter, number 19 is struck. Chapter 20, appropriation for water system improvements. I see no objection. Number 21, appropriate, appropriation for rehabilitation of the town's stormwater system. I see no objection. Number 22, health and sanitation appropriation. One, two, three, four, five, okay, that, number 22 is struck. Number 23, library appropriation. I see no objection. Number 24, cemetery appropriation. I see no objection. Number 25, parks department. I see no objection. Number 27, Blue Hills Regional Technical School appropriation. I see no objection. Number 28, consolidated facilities appropriation. I see no objection. Number 29, interest and maturing debt appropriation. I see no objection. Number 30, rescind unissued debt authorizations. I see no objection. Number 31, stabilization fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 32, other post-employment benefit trust appropriation. I see no objection. Number 33, reserve fund appropriation. I see objections, 33 is struck. Number 34, revolving fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 35, peg access enterprise fund appropriation. I see no objection. Number 36, excuse me, authorized select board to accept easements. I see no objection. Number 41, extend term of master plan implementation committee by one year. I see no objections. I will now recap, I'll just list the items that are going to be included in your warrant, these are the ones we'll vote on in a moment. So we will vote on Article Two, Three, Five, Eight, Nine, Ten, Twelve, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Twenty, Twenty-one, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-seven, Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, Thirty, Thirty-one, Thirty-two, Thirty-four, Thirty-five, Thirty-six, and Forty-one. Seeing no objections, we will proceed to the vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by pressing one, pressing yes, no, press no, abstain, please press abstain or refrain from pressing, thank you. Matt, do we have sufficient votes? Okay, we can close the poll. I declare a two-thirds vote on the consent agenda, thank you very much. With that, we will proceed to Article One, recommended that the town vote to accept the report of the town accountant and other town officers and committees. This is where we hear from various committees elected and appointed, who have been doing your work. We have a few of them tonight. I'd like to start with Mr. Brian Walsh, who is the chair of the fire station building committee. Mr. Walsh, you are recognized, and he has a short presentation and a video for us. By the way, I've been informed that Congressman Lynch will not be able to make it tonight. We'll have to catch him next year.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Walsh, precinct eight, and chairman of the fire station building committee. We have a four-minute video that I'd like to share with you, and then I had a few remarks to say.
The building was, was open for 146 years, ran as a fire department for 146 years, so there was a lot of equipment, a lot of memories, a lot of things that really mean a lot to a lot of people, so moving out was, was definitely a very overwhelming task. We moved in January 30th, full time that, that day, and we've been in ever since. We have four groups, and each group is assigned between seven and eight firefighters for stationed here at headquarters, so, and in all told, probably about 30 firefighters moved from the old firehouse to the new firehouse. Fire station building committee, I mean, they've done, the amount of work that, as a volunteer group that they have done for this, is, I just can't thank them enough. The select board, the warrant committee, town meeting, we thank them all, I mean, from where we were to where we are now. We're light years ahead of where we were, and that's great, we do have some more work to do. Obviously, with the other two firehouses, to bring them up to the, to the standard that we've now created in this town, yeah, it's, there's a challenge moving forward, but it's an important, there's a lot of things that we didn't have in the old space, we have plenty of storage now, so we actually have spot, and you know what, what equipment's fixed, whether the fixment, equipment's broke, that we can store it the right places and make sure that gets dealt with. We fit all of our, most of our apparatus in here right now, we do have some, some limits, but, you know, the morale of the firefighters is, is so much higher now, just because of the way that it's, it's kind of come together, where we have space for the apparatus, we have space for the, for the equipment, we have space for them, we have space for whether they want to sit down and study and take a college class, or study for a promotional exam, there's space for that. There's space for them to, we have a wellness space now, that, that they can, they can work out and, and reduce a lot of the stress, to make sure that, you know, that when they go home, they're happier and healthier. And then, you know, the other part of it is that decontamination process, you know, they, they, they decontaminate themselves, and they know that we've done something for them, there was a real need, and the towns addressed that, and now, so, that helps them. So the morale is, is really, really high right now, and, you know, we're, we're doing some things that we haven't done in a long time, and, well, just because of the space, the training, training is so important, and, and the firefighters love it, they love to train, they love to be busy, they love to do things. You look at the apparatus bay, this is very nice, these are new doors, the bi-fold doors, they're, they're really nice, they, they work right, and they, you know- They, they work right, and they, you know, it helps with the environment, you know what I mean? They, they, they're, you know, thermal protected, and so the training is going to pay dividends in the future, where our firefighters are going to be properly trained on. And, and they are properly trained, but just doing it, keeping their skills up, uh, and proficient, that's huge. That's really important for the firefighters to, to make sure, and then we have a place, a space to do it. The technology upgrades. We went from a, a 1950s fire department to a, it's a stuff that's current. We have a lot of technology in the firehouse, and, you know, um, it's going to help us do our job better. The firehouses are old, so I get to put this new one into service, and hopefully Engine 2 and Engine 4 into service before my career is done. So it's, yeah, it's, it's something that, very time-consuming, a lot of work, but it was also very rewarding to get to this position. The same job once you leave the firehouse, but now it's, it's when they're in the firehouse doing the job. It's, it's easier for them. It's easier to get the information that they need. It's easier for them to, uh, you know, be prepared, you know, check, test the equipment, train, make sure that they're prepared for the day. Uh, it's just easier and, uh, and safer.
I agree. That was worth clapping for. And I hope, uh, we, there was a, a brief open house just before the firefighters had to move in. I hope some of you were able to, to take advantage of that, but there'll be something else planned, uh, coming up in about a month or so. And I know the Fire Chief is with us. He's now a certified movie star, and, uh, he's, he and his crew have done a terrific effort in helping us along to get to this point. So, a couple more things that, the, uh, as, as the chief mentioned, that the staff has moved into the headquarters. Uh, there, there's still some work being done on resurfacing. We've worked with the neighbors in the back to make sure we've come up with plantings and an acceptable, make the new fire station an acceptable neighbor. And we're scheduled for some substantial completion in July of, uh, 2024. So July of this year, we, everything will be cleaned up and done. Probably more important, as we started, the project is on budget. That's always a good thing. I wanted to give you a brief update on our next effort. Our next effort is the East Milton, uh, Fire Station. And ironically, and, and, and timing is everything, and, and just this latest, uh, issue of the Milton Times, there's a letter to the editor, a resident understandably asking Atherton Street Station needs to be done, and wants to see that, the town committed to that, uh, before we start authorizing other budgets. Well, it, it raises the question, we had, we had to pick a station next, so why East Milton? Well, frankly, it was, it was clear, because that, the station that we occupy now in East Milton was actually built before the expressway was sunk, in a matter of four years. Uh, and the fire engines now spend a minimum of one full minute to come out of that East Milton Station and get over to the East Milton Post Office. And I always like to say, even in my advanced age, I can probably take a rock and hit the fire station from the East Milton Fire Station. And to take a minute while they're responding to an emergency, uh, just to make it there, that's unacceptable. So that's reason number one. The floor on the fire engine only, uh, just under two years ago, the floor is failing. We've had to spend money to shore up the floor. We no longer park a second engine in the East Milton Station, because we're worried about it being able to hold it. Uh, and, you know, frankly, the, the, it's, it's interesting and ironic. The headquarters station, there's no floor between the engine bays. The new East Milton Station, there'll be no floor. When you build fire engines today, you know, these trucks gets larger and heavier, uh, and, and that's not a really a, a practical thing to do.
Three minutes, Mr. Walsh.
Yep. The vouch or wrap-up. Thank you, sir. Uh, so completing, so that, those are two big reasons we really got to, should get out and make East Milton the next station to build and get out of. But the third one is when we complete the new station and move out of the old one, it'll free up a property worth a million dollars to the town. It'll be the Select Board's discretion, but that's another reason to get that done and out of the way. We will be starting, I've, I've reached out to the East Milton Neighborhood Association, I've reached out to the Milton Art Center, and we will be starting neighborhood meetings, uh, next month with the community as we, uh, move forward with the East Milton Station. And with that, sir, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you know, actually, Mr. Moderator, I neglected in the transition to thank everybody in this room for their support in this project. It's been long overdue. It's a long time coming. Former members of the boards and committees that have been here for years that have supported it, everyone that's here now, and all you town meeting members. This is important, and I sincerely, sincerely thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator.
I have a question for
Please.
My friend Brian Walsh.
Yes.
So I think
If you could note your name and precinct.
Leroy Walker, uh, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Member. Uh, I don't think the, the question was, uh, what the prioritization for the three stations was. I think we're all clear on that, and we're, uh, quite clear that we need three, three new fire stations. So I think the question was, how do we make sure that, uh, we don't lose the commitment or delay the commitment to the third fire station? So what's the funding strategy with, with the modification that we had not anticipated for the, uh, East Milton Station? Are we certain, and do we have a plan for ensuring that the financing for the Atherton Street Station will go forward on schedule and on budget as well? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to
Please, you're recognized.
So, uh, to really give you a strong sense of this, I just have to back up a little bit and tell you that we had planned, as the Fire Station Building Committee, to go out and put out to bid all three fire stations at once. Uh, the thinking, both our owner's project manager and our architect felt strongly that we could probably get the best pricing for the town, taking that approach. A contractor commit and have that many, several years of service. Then COVID hit. We were about to go out, and COVID hit. And frankly, it completely fouled up the supply chain. That, all of a sudden now, for a contractor to commit to pricing of materials that they're going to buy several years out in the future, the only thing they're going to do is to build, bid with high prices. So we said, all right. And by the way, we had a $32.7 million budget that we felt we could, at the pre-COVID, that we could finish all three stations with. The, Tom Hurley, a former Chair of the, uh, Select Board, had the wisdom to notice that we, we were in the middle of still build six schools, and we built a beautiful library, and that those capital projects had declining debt over the years. And working with his Select Board, they said, you know what? We know we got to build fire stations. So they, he introduced legislation that was passed this town meeting. It was passed, uh, by the town residents, and it was actually passed by the state legislature. And I believe the town of Milton is the only one that has this. And it says, basically, we're going to freeze that declining debt. And that declining debt will start building up a, a, an account, if you will, that can only be used to pay to replace the fire stations. We, uh, we, we made the motion to get what we thought was appropriate funding to do all three. Uh, now, post-COVID, it, it's not going to happen. We're not going to have enough to finish all three. However, the legislation that passed, it froze $50 million. So at some point, and I, I didn't necessarily plan on springing it on you tonight, but at some point, uh, we'll be before you some points soon, and we'll be looking to see if we can get your support to go after the, some more money out of that $50 million that was already approved through the, the town and the state, so that we can properly fund and complete Atherton Street Station. And I will tell you, there is no ambiguity and no question among the members of the Fire Station Building Committee. We need to do the, all three of these stations, and we will do all three of these stations. Does that help, Mr. Uh?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Um, I was contacted by a citizen named Mr. Griffin Angus, and, uh, as is our, my practice, I go to the town clerk and ask if Mr. Angus is, uh, a registered voter, and she replies, no. So, uh, I have to give him the bad news that he's unable to come address the body. And then his mother contacts me and said, well, Griffin's only 15. And so I said, well, in that case, I think with the, um, permission of the body, we'll hear from Mr. Griffin Angus of the Youth Task Force. And Mr. Angus, you're recognized.
All right. Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Griffin Angus. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, and like you said, I'm here to give, uh, the, the yearly update for the Milton Youth Task Force. Um, this is our, our first year back, um, since we ceased operations due to COVID. Um, so I'm excited to share kind of what we've done so far. Next slide. Um, so this is, uh, this is about our membership. So as you can see, I, I have all the, the membership requirements up there. Um, we have, we have a wide variety of people who are all invested in the well-being of our youth. We have youth ourselves, like me. We have three of those, um, high schoolers, all different grades. Um, we have, uh, Milton parents, we have Coalition members, um, we have our Select Board member, Ben Zoll. Um, and those are, those are all the names of everybody. Um, so we have, we have a wide variety of, of expertise, um, and a wide variety of ages and, and all that, so, yeah. Next slide. Um, so this is our charge. Um, we are here to explore expanded opportunities and programming for all of our youth, including physical spaces, um, that help, uh, ages 11 to 18 socialize and be productive in the Milton community, um, and make progress. Um, reports to the, um, uh, Select Board, um, because we are officially a Select Board Advisory Committee. Next slide. So this is, this is the, the big stuff. This is everything that we've done, um, so far. So, um, our, our first meeting, uh, major meeting with the community was in August. We met with stakeholders, uh, a lot of it was parents. And this was kind of really just deciding, um, what we needed to be prioritizing, um, and, and what we needed to be doing on our board, um, what the youth needed. Um, and we followed that up with Police Chief King and Tony Will of the Cunningham Park Foundation, um, where it, it was really decided in that first major meeting that, that the woods was going to be the biggest issue that we tackled, and how we can have pro-social opportunities and physical spaces that are discouraging, um, numbers there. So we followed that up with them, um, talk about security and, and how we can best be, um, patrolling the area, and, and generally just decreasing the number of youth that are there. Um, and the biggest takeaway, this has been my favorite part of, of working with the Youth Task Force, has been, uh, the development of a teen center. So currently in town, we have the Wildcat Den, but, um, that is in the basement of, I believe, the First Parish Church, and it's been great so far. Um, but we would be looking to have, uh, expanded programs. We would be looking to have actual, uh, like a permanent physical space, permanent full-time staff member, um, and, and expanded program opportunities for, for a wider age range. Right now, the Wildcat Den is only for middle schoolers. Um, so we'd be looking to expand that to high schoolers as well, and have a little bit more robust funding. Um, and with that, we formed the Facility Subcommittee, which I'm on, and the Programming Subcommittee, which is focusing a little bit in the interim, um, what we need to be doing, um, what, what trainings and things like that, career building, resume building, um, that sort of thing. And they would obviously continue that work once we actually have, uh, had the teen center. Um, so we've been looking at the, uh, the, actually, the second floor of the, this is well timed, of the old Town Hall Fire Station. Um, I believe Article 4 is, sets aside a little bit of money. Um, although we don't have, we don't have rights to the space or anything like that, um, that is the central location that we've been kind of looking for, and we think that that would be perfect. So there's a little bit of money set aside for some, um, architectural envisioning of, of what that space could look like, um, for all purposes. But, um, I think that that would be a, a good first step for us. Um, hopefully, in the future, we can move into that space. And we're not the only people, um, looking into this community center type of thing. There's been some other efforts, I believe. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, next, please. So this is our, our future plans. A lot of it is, is the, the teen center. Um, a lot of the things that I've been talking about, we need to secure actual access to that space. Um, and we also need to, uh, get funding and figure out what we're actually, if, if, wherever we end up moving to, um, what, what we would actually be doing there. And in the meantime, we'll keep looking at programming opportunities, keep meeting with members of the community, developing, um, our priorities and, and what we want to be doing in the meantime. Um, we were looking to have one or two programming sessions before the end of the school year. It's looking like that might be, um, once we get back from break, but, uh, our, our programming Subcommittee's been working hard, and, uh, we appreciate them for that, so. Um, yeah, this was our, our first year, a lot of setting the priorities that we wanted to be doing for the future. Um, but I, it's been a ton of fun. I'm looking forward to hopefully being back next year, and, um, thank you for your time.
Well said, Mr. Angus. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Yes. Uh, th- thank you. Uh, Sean Bentley, uh, Precinct 7. I don't know if I got your name correct, Griffin.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your service on this. I just wanted to ask a question. I know some towns are eligible for, like, MBTA, like, youth passes. It's, like, Milton a participating community in that endeavor?
Uh, yeah, we are, actually. Um, I know that we have, I believe, S-class passes. I have one, I have two from the school, for some reason. Um, but yes, we are, we are eligible. Um, I think if anyone wants, if anyone has kids, I think they're available in the main office, I believe, anytime. But, um, yes, we are eligible for that.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, next per our bylaws, we'll hear a report from Mr. Michael Suffin of the Audit Committee. Mr. Suffin, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's good to be here. Uh, I'm one of five members of the Audit Committee and serve as our Chair. Uh, our primary responsibility is to oversee the work of our external audit firm, as they're required to issue an audit opinion on the financial statements to the town each year, uh, in addition to other reports that they issue. Uh, we report out each year, uh, to this body on the recommendations from the Audit Committee. There were three from this past year. Our Town Accountant's Office agrees with all three comments, um, one of which has already been remediated and addressed, and is a closed matter, and two comments that remain open. Um, of the three recommendations, uh, one came from this most recent audit, and it relates to, uh, some examples of purchase orders that were dated after the invoice dates. Uh, the town acknowledges that, uh, we shouldn't be doing that. Process is in place to work with the Town Administrator and the various departments where we had some of those inconsistencies, and will be remediated. Uh, the other two comments are from the prior-year audits, uh, the first of which, again, has been closed down at this point, and relates to, uh, debt issuances, which were being incorrectly accounted for in the town's accounting system. Um, those have since been corrected, and the financial statements, they were corrected. And then the final comment, uh, relates to general long-term debt account, um, and new issuances not being, uh, timely accounted for. Um, it was also then creating a reconciliation matter between the Town Accountant's Office and the Treasurers' Office. That is, uh, still an open comment. Progress has been made, but it's something that still needs to be closed. Um, that concludes, uh, the three recommendations from the external audit firm this year. Uh, no other comments at this point, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. If no questions, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Suffin.
Great. Thank you.
And lastly, we'll hear from Mr. Sean O'Rourke of the School Building Committee. Mr. O'Rourke, there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Sean O'Rourke, uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, Chair of the School Building Committee. Just give me one second to pull this up. Uh, next slide, please. So what you see here is, uh, essentially a timeline, uh, for a school building committee. You know, we've been together for, now for a little over five years. Um, the first two years that School Building Committee's been working, you know, we, we worked to basically develop the school project and find a site. Um, we, we came upon the site upon Gao Road that we all voted on last year. You know, we worked on that, and two years ago approached this body, uh, with it, with a project. Uh, we, we voluntarily pulled that back, revised it for a year, basically got delayed, and got this approved last year. Uh, so since last year's, uh, May Town Meeting, we've been working on teaming with architects and owners, project manager. Uh, the intent of that teaming is to build up a concept design, a schematic design, get a better cost estimate, and approach this body, ideally this fall. The intent to get the funding for the school is to do, uh, essentially a debt The intent to get the funding for the school is to do essentially a debt exclusion in the fall, followed by a town-wide ballot vote. And with that, hoping all that goes well, we'd have a school open in fall 2027. Next slide. So the basis for this is all based on, in 2019, the school committee hired DRA Architecture. They did the last school building project for the town. At that time, they identified 26 classrooms as essentially a long-term deficiency at the elementary school level. So we worked at that as our current baseline. Next slide, please. So classroom conversions. Again, just to remind people kind of where we're at. Next slide, please. Gymnasiums being used as classrooms. Next slide. Music on stages. Next slide. Carts. Next slide. Students in hallways. And then in the library, we have classrooms, and I'll touch on that one after. Next slide, please. So enrollment and grade configuration. So when we look at this graph, this is the current enrollment that we see here. We had a spike in 2019 and went down during COVID, and then basically it's flattened out. Projections for next year's kindergarten class is 365. For that, to put it in context, they'll be the second-largest kindergarten class in the past 20 years. Next slide. So current configuration of the district is what you see here. Four elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school. Next slide. What our proposal is to address the 26 classrooms at the elementary school level, we're going to remove preschool and fifth grade and move them around. By doing so, we free up 26 classrooms at the elementary school level without having to redistrict. We're going to create a new upper-middle school and house seventh and eighth grade in the preschool there. And then the Pierce School, which in 2019 wasn't a problem for enrollment, all of that has migrated up there. We're getting into a crunch at the middle school. So by taking a grade out of there, we address that. The other part with Gao Road, it now introduces a new school with the high school, basically creating an educational campus. Next slide. So when we go back to that enrollment, we pull out preschool and the fifth grade. Next slide. You'll see it drops below that capacity number. The capacity number at the elementary schools is 1,900, which is the horizontal line that you see there. Next slide. And site selection. So as everyone's aware, we passed the land swap last year. The home rule petition for the land swap is currently at the state level. Senate Timmeltie came to a School Building Committee meeting and basically provided a guideline for us, a 15-step process by which this would get executed through the state. We're currently on step 11, so we've made a lot of progress since the past year. It's now scheduled for a third reading in the Senate, and then we'll move on to the House. Next slide. So the proposal for, you know, just to remind everybody of what we're doing, the intent is to realign Gao Road. By realigning Gao Road, we can use a portion of parkland and a much smaller portion of conservation land to build a school. Next slide. So conceptually, when we lay the plan on top of that, you know, as the road gets moved, it frees up the site, the building plan is to locate it essentially where the existing Gao Road is right now. Next slide. The team that we built, Arrow Street Architecture is probably one of the best architectural firms you'll find in the city. We've also teamed up with PMA Consulting, Mr. Sean Burke, who's the new Town Meeting Member with us, is here with us tonight, and Seamus O'Connor, both at PMA Consulting. Next slide. This is the deep roster of subconsultants. So every concern that comes up, there's going to be a subconsultant that can answer the questions. Next slide. What you see here is kind of a conceptual study that Arrow Street has started with as their baseline. It shows what they call their consolidated strategy, which is everything under one building, one roof. There's a preschool wing for preschool and a separate entity or a separate wing for seventh and eighth grade. Next slide. Now, what we've been working on too recently is educational visioning strategies. So the educational planner has been working with district leadership team to develop this. Now, I actually attended this a couple of weeks ago. We met in the Pierce Library. If you notice in the picture, behind that partition is another classroom. The noise that was coming out of that classroom, or the noise we were generating, it was substantial. And what it did was kind of bring me back. Next slide. There are studies that are done for classroom noise and learning. And the problem is, at younger ages, when they have noise in their classroom, they don't learn. They can't hear. Next slide. So, you know, for us, we need to address this quickly. So what we've looked at is, as with everything I've been doing on this project, we're going down parallel paths. We've submitted a new statement of interest to Mass School Building Authority, so we've got that in the queue for them. However, I'm not overly optimistic that we get selected, so we're also pursuing a separate path of non-MSBA. That's what we're looking to do. The idea of that is, if we can get this project done quicker, it will be more, we'll save money on the escalation in the long run. An MSBA project, because it's a state agency, has a lot of checks and balances. It prolongs that timeline. By doing so, it's going to cost more. So by doing it quicker, we address the problem faster and save money.
About three minutes, sir.
Yep. So what you see here is essentially from our architect, their proposed schedule that we're looking at. The idea that they're doing, and as I mentioned, we're in schematic design right now. We're not in full design. So we're working conceptually on this to develop cost estimates to present to this body. The goal of that is to do it in the fall. If, again, if we get that green light, we can essentially start construction of realigning that road next year and basically, again, having a school open in 2027. Next slide, last one. So again, this is what we're looking at. For those of you who've been here for a while, the Fire Station Building Committee had very similar renderings years ago. Tonight, you saw openings of it. You can walk in and see it. Hopefully, in about three years, you'll have a similar thing for a school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other questions on Article One, we'll proceed to the vote. If we could open up the poll. All in favor of Article One, as recommended, please signify by voting yes, oppose no, or abstain. Matt, do we have the votes in at this point? Few more? Okay. The motion carries with a vote of 229 to 3. So Article One passes. Article Two was passed by consent. Article Three was passed by consent. We'll go to Article Four. I think you may know that we have a green sheet for Article Four tonight. I'll just describe for the new members what a green sheet is. After the warrant is published, and the black text in your warrant is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, and that serves as the motion on the floor normally when I read it, a green sheet occurs when some change is requested typically by the submitting body after the publication of the warrant and before Town Meeting. And if there's support from the submitting body for that change and support from the Warrant Committee with the acceptance of that change, the Warrant Committee can modify its recommendation, and they do so through a green sheet. So we have that tonight. We printed out green sheets over on the table here, and we'll put it up on the board. So what I'll do is I'll read just a summary of the green sheet here tonight. So recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $6,164,000 to fund the capital projects listed below. Then, under bonded capital items, you'll see a new insert. Parks, Guile Road, Lower Field Reconstruction, useful life 15 years, $400,000. The recommended bonded capital items are now $4,864,000. There's no change to the non-bonded item. And then the text reads, you'll see an insert. I won't read all the text. But on the third line, we're now aggregating not more than $4,864,000 under and pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, et cetera. So that has now been voted on, approved by the Select Board, the Capital Committee, and the Warrant Committee. So that's the motion on the floor. With that, if you would like to speak to this, I think I'll first start with, let me go to my notes for a moment. We'll go to Chairman Wells, who will describe the background here. Chairman Wells.
I'm ripping that tape off. It's a trick. Good evening again. Richard Wells, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I got this one hitting my head, select one. Maybe I should just wake up and start today all over again. So many of you in this room know the history of this. I also cheer Capitol, and I think I've attended nearly every committee that has weighed in on this from Park and Rec, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, our own board. I don't know if there's anyone else. There was a lot. About eight years ago, Park and Rec came with about 200 parents looking to build a turf field at Lower Guile for the children of this town. To be honest with you, I thought, when I saw the price and the possibility of it and the challenges that this community faces, that this body faces every year, I never thought we could do it. But after a lot of work and a lot of hard work from a lot of people, the Capital Committee found the money, the Select Board supported it, parks, and it was funded by this body, I believe in 2021? Amy, am I correct? 2022. 2022 budget, but in the year 2021. It has been a lot of work to try and make this happen. How it got to a turf field, and I'm not an expert, although I've learned a lot about it, the possibility of regrassing this field just was not a viable financial option. If we were to try and turf it, I mean, if we tried to grow grass there, it just would not take. And the investment for what it would have cost would have not been viable, which is when the inside of the Park Commissioners, Park and Rec staff, and many others come up with the idea of a progressive, modern turf field. These are the type of turf fields that exist right here at Brooks Fields. They exist at Curry College. They exist at Milton Academy. They exist at BU Northeast and Harvard, Boston College, Fair Academy, BBNN, and just about every private entity and school that I can think of. And yes, our own former seven-time Super Bowl champion, Tom Brady, at Gillette Stadium, played on this type of field. So tonight, it was our hope to have this project up and moving, but there is a $400,000 sunset on part of the APRA money that has been approved for this project. The reason it is not done yet is it has been brought for a final review before the, I always mix them up, DEP or EPA? DEP. We've been waiting for several months for that final approval, but it's just not got here. And if it is not here by June 30th, then we would lose that funding, which is why this board voted unanimously to, as well as I believe the Park Commissioners did as well, to make this change tonight and recommend to you that we swap the APRA money and move that to Water and Sewer Enterprise and increase the bonding ceiling to cover the cost of this project. The one thing that I really can't emphasize enough to you, having attended all these meetings and listened to all of these parents, these mothers, these fathers, these coaches, the people who take care of your kids, our kids, is how much they deserve to have this. And I think it's incumbent upon us tonight. This isn't about approving a field. This is about approving a simple transfer of money to give a unique opportunity to the kids, just like that young man who spoke earlier tonight, and every other kid of athletic age in this town, and those who will come, those kids that Mr. O'Rourke talked about who will come to the schools, give them the chance to have a first-rate turf field that, to be honest, I never thought would happen. And we're the ones who can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino. You're recognized.
Oh, yeah, you'd love me to sit down. Diane DeTulio, Agostino, Precinct Nine, Chair of the Commission on Disability as well. And this is one subject matter that I think we 100% agree on. However, the legality is in question. And I just want to cover, there is two parts. There's the one part about the legal issue, and then there is the American with Disabilities Act concern. And I'd like to thank the many residents and Town Meeting members who contacted me last week while I was seriously ill to bring this to my attention, that there was a green sheet, and they wanted to know, is this legal? Can they do this? Like I said, we all agree on getting this done. But since it was more than five residents, I did begin by making calls and emails. And my initial thought, related to past history at Town Meeting, Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, was interpreted years ago that you couldn't increase the amount that when the residents received the warrant that used to be mailed to everybody, or when it's posted, which it is now posted on the town website, that that gave them notice of how much was going to be spent. So that was my first thought, and I received information, I forget who gave it to me. Town officials said, no, that's not accurate, that there's a limit on how much we can spend. But today, the law on the warrant and what's posted in the warrant versus what this green sheet shows, so if you look at page 16 on the warrant, you do not see the line item titled Parks, Guile Road, Lower Field Reconstruction. Sorry, I have difficulty breathing, left over from allergic reaction to medication. However, I will get through this. So what, by making phone calls to state officials, their law departments, I did find out that it is not legal to add a subject matter to a Town Me warrant or a green sheet. And I will hand you the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Senior Deputy Commissioner of Local Services, Sean Cronin, the attorney. Written, can you please give the moderator one? Written reply to me that I only received today, because when I first contacted them, I accepted her word. But then I realized Milton officials will want something in writing. So after, over the weekend, I emailed her, and she got it to me this afternoon. The attorney who responded, and our discussions on Friday, pointed out that the Mass General Law 39, Section 10, was updated to make sure that the law was interpreted correctly. The importance is, what is the purpose of a warrant article? And it was, the citation she gave me was their April of '22 written document. The purpose of a warrant article is to give notice of the subject matter to be acted on at Town Meeting. So the green sheet subject matter was only voted in the last week. Tonight's Monday, right? I'm still trying to catch up on time. After multiple emails and calls to various Town officials to obtain an answer in writing from Town Council, with the expectation that Town Council would contact the correct authority, I did receive this late this afternoon. And it's written confirmation. It is not legal to just add something for a Town Meeting vote. Green sheet, pink sheet, yellow sheet, white sheet, any color sheet. So if we vote tonight to include that line item that the residents were not informed of, then we stand to be, once again, challenged at the state level. And the... level. And the additional document, to be sure, she sent me like a 14-page document, I emailed the attorney back, and she quickly replied, and I asked her, did I give you guys my personal note from the attorney? Well, she, I copied the section that I just read to you all, the section that has been highlighted for the Select Board and the officers from the chair to the vice chair to the secretary, all received this information last week, however, we all received the information last week on this, we only received the information last week. So while we all want a field, whether we want grass or we want turf, it's not the issue. The issue is voting something that was not identified, has the subject matter. On Friday, she said the topic, the line item, the subject matter. That's what had to be the same in the warrant. It's not a matter of increasing or decreasing the amount of money. So the moderator also did not have this document until he received it today, and I did confirm with her, oh, here it is, that is the correct section that makes the green sheet not legal to be voted on. So I would make a motion that we revert to what the warrant on page 19 states and what the residents of the town of Milton were notified. It does sound like a horrible way to do things, but it is the law, and there can be, could be ramifications for not abiding by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services compliant laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just so the body understands, Ms. Agostino has made a motion to eliminate the changes, and you see in track changes mode, and revert back to the language as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion is not before the body. So at this point, you would like to re-
We don't have to talk about it.
So you'd like to, yeah, we have, so there's no valid motion before the body. So the motion before the body right now, then, is the green sheet as presented. With that, you have a follow-up, ma'am?
Diane DeTulio Agostino, precinct nine, town, chair of the Commission on Disability. I had previously had noted to you that we have a member of the commission to speak and address the additional ADA concern. However, I've also raised the question repeatedly since Friday for town council to identify why he believes this is legal, when in fact the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, has clearly given us the document to confirm it's not. And that's the question I've been asking since Friday, since I got the green sheet.
Okay, we'll recognize town council to answer why you believe this is a legal green sheet. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator Peter Mello from Murphy Hesse Tumain and Lehane, Office of Town Council. Happy-
A little louder. Thank you.
Can you, is that okay? Better? Sorry about that. So I will address that in a second. I don't accept the premise of the question, but I'll, and I'll address in as concise a fashion as I can why. But I would be remiss if I didn't recognize, is that one of the, perhaps more than anything, what influenced me to pursue a career in law was that, as a kid, I had some involvement in my, with the local city council where I grew up. And I, I just want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that I thought what Griffin, I think was his name, just did was really amazing. It was just exceptional. I remember vividly kind of the anxiety associated with presenting in this sort of a setting, and that was, that was really exceptional. So I just wanted to recognize that. So.[865.57][865.57][applause] I hope that applause was for him, not for me.
Rest assured.
So respectfully, I disagree with the proposition that the proposed green sheet amendment is impermissible. I think, and I also disagree with the notion that whatever the DLS said about this issue contradicts this, you know, my position on it. The, I'm just looking at this city and town excerpt for the first time, but I don't think it's at all inconsistent with my conclusion on it. And I'll summarize as follows. First of all, the language of the article itself is quite broad, and that's distinct from the warrant committee's recommendation. I just want, you know, I want to make sure that's understood, that the warrant actually recites in much broader terms the proposed article, the recommendation that then enumerates all the proposed line items is not part of the warrant article, is part of the recommendation. So that, that's, you know, issue one. Secondly, there's a section of the bylaws that explicitly contemplates the, you know, the proffering of a green sheet amendment for an appropriation, namely, Section 7510. I was, you know, it's very, it's one sentence, so I can read it without, without belaboring the issue. It says, "No appropriation of a sum of money exceeding $500 shall be made until the subject matter thereof has been considered and estimates reported to the town, either by the Select Board members or other town offices, or by the warrant committee, or some committee chosen for the purpose and pursuance of a town vote." So it actually expressly contemplates this sort of process, provided certain criteria met, which in this case, they have been, specifically, the warrant committee considered the green sheet proposal last week and reported the recommendation on the proposal to the town via the green sheet. There's no, I think, importantly, there's no requirement in that bylaw provision that requires that the reporting be included in the warrant or contemporaneous with its transmission. And I think that in view of other language in the bylaws, various statutory, or tenants of statutory construction compel the conclusion that, that omission was intentional. We also, my understanding is bond counsel was consulted and, you know, concurred that this is permissible. And I also sought to sort of ascertain the town's historical practice on this, in this regard. And my understanding is that this is totally consistent with how the town has handled this sort of thing in the past. So for all those reasons, in my opinion, this is perfectly appropriate and permissible and not, you know, violative of any municipal finance requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. I think I saw Mr. Firs, Ms. Harrington, then we think Ms. Dillon, and we'll go back and forth. So Mr. Firs, you still want to speak? You recognize? Sir?
I'm just going to defer because I'm not talking about the field. So I'll just go first.
Okay. Then Ms. Harrington?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nora Harrington, precinct two, a town meeting member. I rise tonight to express my concerns regarding the funding of Lower Guile Field as a turf field. First of all, let me say that I know Milton needs more and better quality playing fields. I'm grateful for our town Parks and Rec programs, and I'm grateful for the volunteer-led sports programs that need field space. Really, I thank all of the coaches and parents who lead our sports programs here in town. I know that our existing fields are often in terrible shape, which results in cancellations of practices and games, and doesn't allow us to expand membership in the sports programs. I'm fully supportive of getting more kids outdoors, running around. I'd like to go back for a moment to the decision to reconstruct Lower Guile as a synthetic turf field. In 2021, town meeting approved $100,000 expense to hire a consultant to advise Parks and Rec about the best course of action for Lower Guile. In 2022, during a presentation to town meeting on Zoom, one of the parks commissioners explained that the choices put before the consultant for analysis were a grass field, a synthetic turf football field only, or a synthetic turf multisport field. Following the consultant's report, the Parks Department chose the synthetic turf multisport option. We, as town meeting members, subsequently approved the funding for the reconstruction of Lower Guile Fields. Two years later, now, we know a lot more about climate change, extreme weather, and damage to our rivers via runoff. We know that flooding is more severe and more frequent, and particularly affects the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood. We're all learning about PFAS forever chemicals, how widespread they already are, and how the use of plastic increases them in our environment, and how they're linked to cancers. PFAS chemicals are found in all plastics, including the plastic grass blades of the turf fields. It's not just in the infill material, you know, which we know has been changed recently. We also know that three states, Colorado, New York, and Maine, have banned synthetic turf fields, as had, as has the city of Boston and other municipalities in our state. There are four bills pending before the Mass Legislature to ban turf fields here in Massachusetts. And yet, we're spending $2.4 million on a product that will only last eight to 10 years, and that will have to pay $500,000 to $1,000,000 to replace at that point. And that, and the current field would then go to a landfill. The concerns about the climate and ecological effects of a plastic playing field adjacent to the Pine Tree Brook were significant enough that Sustainable Milton and the Nippon City River Watershed Association both wrote to the Conservation Commission in 2023, expressing their concerns and urging them to consider the environmental and health costs of adding plastic fields to our environment. Many of the Pine Tree Brook neighbors, an area, again, that experiences flooding, have continued to express their concerns over the last two years, especially via a group called Grass for Guile. However, the Conserva- Conservation Commission did approve the synthetic turf field option, but only by a vote of four to three. We need better playing fields for sure. Did you know that in both Springfield and in Marblehead, their parks and playing fields are 100% organically managed grass, and they have been for years? I know the folks here tonight who desperately want this turf field will say that grass isn't hardy enough to provide the kind of playing time we need. But a report out of Marblehead says they're getting 1,800 to 2,200 playing hours per year per field. Oops. Regarding whether or not a totally reconstructed, properly drained, robust grass field would work at Lower Guile, I don't know, because there is no information about that found on our Parks and Rec website. Although a consultant was hired, and it was said that he was asked to weigh three options, including a grass field, there's no final report which outlines the data and the pros and cons of various options. We're simply going by the assertion that grass won't work, which we've been told over and over and over again, without any actual data that I've, that's been presented to us to know whether or not that's actually the case. There's no doubt that Lower Guile Field doesn't work right now. In the Parks presentation to town meeting in 2022 that I referenced earlier, it was stated that the field was last renovated in 2011 and had an expected lifespan of six to seven years. So as you can see, we're now six years past that expected lifespan. Of course, it's a wreck. It doesn't mean that a properly renovated, drained, reconstructed, properly managed grass field wouldn't work. You know, additionally, if we put another turf field on the high school campus, that will mean three turf fields on the property and two natural grass ones. The synthetic fields, Brooks and Piattelli, are surrounded by a chain, a locked chain link fence and are only available to organized sports. Are we doing this again? Are we taking away a multi-use green space from our community, from people who don't play organized sports, and fencing it in behind a locked gate, only available to people who participate in sports programs? Organized sports in town serve many kids. And again, I thank everybody here who participates in making it happen. But they don't serve all kids. There are many kids and families who don't take part in them and who may never take part in them, but would still like a green space to visit, to take a walk, to throw a ball around, to play an informal game of pickup soccer. As a matter of fact, I'm part of a group called Milton Sports For All that I started with some of the people in this room, and we put together, you know, sports and recreation opportunities for kids with disabilities. And we are always scrambling to try to find fields where we can do kickball in the fall, because it's so hard, as you all know, it's so hard to find field space in Milton. So we need fields for those kinds of more casual opportunities that are more accessible to more people. I, regarding the $400,000, I'm interested in hearing what other people say. But I'm very concerned about the direction that we chose to take two years ago to move towards a turf field. I feel like we didn't have all the information about grass and that we need that to make an informed decision. What I hope today is we begin a more open, inclusive conversation about our, how our town resources are used and sometimes changed. We have very finite amount of green space, and there are many stakeholders in town. I hope any decisions from here on out include a more robust public process prior to decisions being made about land use.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
And I think that's it. And I'm not making an actual motion, but I hope that people will rethink what we're doing at Lower Guile. Thank you.[1515.65][1515.65][applause]
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Liz Dillon. I'm a town meeting member from precinct six, and I want to jump on the bandwagon real quick and say great job to Governor's Road neighbor, Griffin Angus. I think he did an amazing job, and I'm proud that I live on the same street as you. I also want to rise in support of the funding for Lower Guile Field. Thanks. I'm pretty short. I am. I'm only five feet tall. Thank you. So I spent a lot of the past week reviewing studies. I read a 545-page, Parts One and Part Two, study from the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, Department of Health and Human Services, Centers for Disease Control, and the Environmental Protection Agency had a joint study that took several years for them to complete and almost as long for me to read. And it was clear that the, these agencies that are tasked by the federal government with determining whether there is any concerns about toxicity with synthetic turf, which was the purpose of this report, found that there was not. They reviewed 88 studies to determine whether or not there was any concern with respect to toxicity, and they found that there was not. They did studies on actual people being exposed, they reviewed the materials in labs, extensive lab testing, and I won't get into it in great detail, but they found that there was not a concern. In fact, they found that the concentration of volatile organic compounds, heavy metals, were actually, in most cases, except for one, which was at a very low level, were less than in background levels. And here, we actually had, the turf that we're talking about was tested as well. And I wrote an article about PFAS once, if anybody wants to read it. I know a lot about it. And this was examined, and it was determined that PFAS is not present in the infill or the turf that's going to be used. It is found in crumb rubber, but that's not what we're talking about here. I appreciate what Nora said about some of the concerns for some of these states that might be rejecting use of turf. I want to say, I found, the Netherlands National Institute for Health and the Environment said playing on turf is safe, that the risk to health is virtually negligible. The European Chemicals Agency found no reason to advise people against playing sports on synthetic turf. The Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services Bureau of Climate and Environmental Health noted that scientific research concluded adverse health effect from using artificial turf is unlikely. And studies were also done by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the State Department of Health of New York, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, the Connecticut Department of Public Health, the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. I could go on, but I'm not going to. And all of these studies found that, in fact, there is not so much of a concern about exposure to turf. And so I want to thank everybody that's done so much research into this. I really only looked into it the past few days. I'm really concerned, and I think my friend John Flakes might talk about this, but I'm really concerned about equity as well in the town. I'm concerned that children are having to go to Canton, for example, to be able to play sports because we don't have enough field space. I'm concerned about people who can't afford to send their kids to private programs in Canton or elsewhere. I'm concerned that we're not taking full advantage of our field space. I'm concerned that Lower Guile Field is being used essentially for a dog park. I'm concerned that when my son played on it last year, you know, it was in pretty rough condition. I know that the- I know that the Conservation Commission studied this. I know that there were experts that were heard from both the Conservation Commission and the Grass for Guile proponents. I know a public hearing was held. And I know that this has been looked into and that Town Meeting voted in favor of funding this turf project two years ago. And I ask that we support the funding that's on the green sheet today. Thank you.
The gentleman to the right of Mr. Fers, I think we're next. By the way, in general, folks, if you could try to stay by the side mics. I think Ms. Dillon came up because she was holding a laptop and kind of awkward, but please proceed.
Good evening. My name's Rob Lievash. I'm a Town Meeting member in Precinct Ten and newly elected Park Commissioner. I'm rising to speak in support of the Lower Guile. I'm rising to speak in support of the Lower Guile Turf Field Project. Similarly to our growing school population, our programming in youth sports, as well as scholastic programming, continue to outgrow the existing town field space. Many of these programs have had to rely on using additional fields in Boston and Canton to continue to offer programming to all age groups and skill levels. These out-of-town fields and permits which our programming rely on could be lost as soon as next year. The end result will mean that programming will need to be cut unless we can find solutions in our own community. The Lower Guile Turf Field Project has the potential to be our first step in offering a playing surface which can be used by multiple sports teams and maximizing playing time. While most proponents of the turf field would love an organic grass option, the simple difference between the turf and grass is the amount of playing time, maintenance, and which sports can be reliably played on each. I have yet to see a grass option which successfully offers the same amount of playing hours and allows for multiple sport options. I urge my fellow Town Meeting members to support this article so that we may continue to offer programming to all of our children. Thank you.
And folks, if you want to speak, if you could come down to the front row, because I sometimes can't tell if you're two or three rows deep, if you're just sitting or wish to speak, so thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Good evening. My name is Mary Thierben, and I'm the President of Milton Youth Football and Cheer. I just want to address that the Guile Road Lower Field Reconstruction Project was approved three years ago. And after spending six months at conservation level last year, it finally passed in November 2023. And it was ready to go out to bid. This project would have been in the final phase of work at this time, or possibly even completed by now. However, the project has been stalled due to an appeal filed in December of 2023, which is why this money is being voted on tonight. There's one thing that I heard throughout all the speakers here tonight, and that is how beautiful Milton is and how much we love our town. So I want you to know how we are all going to benefit from this project. Financially, this will save our town a lot of money. Functionally, this adds another field to use during the year, which reduces pressure on all of our other fields. Aesthetically, this will beautify Milton. It will make you feel really proud. It will add more value to all of us. And happiness, because it is about our kids. This is about our kids. Our kids will thrive and move more due to less rainouts. So I'm asking you to please vote yes to increased lending for this project. Thank you.
Gentleman in red, I think we're waiting to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nicholas Ahern, Precinct Six, Town Meeting Member. Sometimes I say, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but if you have a dead horse, why not beat it for a moment? I'm a father and a coach. I stand in full support of allocating funds to complete the Lower Guile Field Project. I stand in support, as I did two years ago, when the body initially voted for this project. As a Town Meeting member, I join to advocate for my community, my neighbors, and the youth of this community. There is no more frequent conversation that I have with families than about playing fields in this town. Simply put, it's a mess, and it's not getting better. Unlike much more polarizing topics related to land swaps and MBTA, this seems simple to most people I talk to. Typically, these conversations are had while I'm standing on a turf field watching one of my daughters play in Weston, Westwood, Wellesley, Braintree, Weymouth, Quincy, Brookline, Hingham, Cohasset, Canton. I could go on. And I keep wondering, what do we know that they don't? And the answer is nothing. So the simple thoughts are this. I've read about PFASs, but I also think about my carbon footprint and that of hundreds of others who spend hours driving to home games in Quincy and Canton and Boston. I think about the negative health impacts of kids being indoors because they can't play on fields in this town. Grass is great, but it will not be cared for as needed, not by anyone's fault, and can sustain about 800 hours of play per year compared to the likely 1,800 we'd need for this field. The Conservation Commission has debated, and since my older daughter, this has been talked about. She was in kindergarten. Next year, she'll be in high school. I hope that for her sake and thousands of young athletes in this town, we get this done now. We've already lost about $400,000 towards this project. The cost of materials is only going up. This has been debated long enough. Let's vote on it and get it done. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christine Turnier, and I represent Precinct Four. I represent, I want to be clear, Precinct Four represents, Pine Tree Brook is part of Precinct Four. So the neighborhood that is directly impacted by some of the decisions that we're making in Lower Guile sits right in my precinct. I'm just going to get this out of the way. I personally do not support turf in this space and for me and my neighbors. I've heard from a lot of my neighbors that they don't feel really excited and enthusiastic about a turf solution and what that potentially can do to our neighborhood. I mean, Nora did a lovely job, thank you very much, about talking some of the environmental impacts. And Liz Dillon, I also want to thank you for a lot of the research that you've done because I think this is a weighty and meaty discussion. And I do think that the research on that is evolving. People who clearly have done a lot more research on the environmental impacts have already spoken. I will not belabor that point. What I want to talk about is my neighborhood and how this is going to impact our lives and this change will impact the people who live in P4. Again, I've heard from a lot of neighbors who don't support this, and they still have unanswered concerns about how this is going to change our neighborhood. Not just the turf and the issue of turf, but other things like parking, like lighting, like trash. Trash. Did you know that Pine Tree Brook has a cleanup every year of the brook? It is a lovely, it's a really beautiful neighborhood moment where we all come together. We clean out the brook, we clean out the swamp and the wetlands that abut these fields that we're talking about. I cannot tell you the shocking amount of related trash that's related to sports and all of the teams that use those fields that we found. Last year, I put on some rain boots, and I went out into one of these, the kind of swampy marsh areas, and I pulled out piles, and I'm not kidding, piles of baseballs. I pulled out mouth guards, I pulled out Gatorade bottles. 135 baseballs. Thank you very much, Deb. And I just want you to think about what are the greater impacts as we make changes in this neighborhood? And what does that mean to your neighbors? You, the people who have kids who are in these sports, you are going to go, you're going to drop your kids off, you're going to cheer your kids on, and I love that. You are going to get in your cars, and you are going to go home. The rest of us who live in P4 will literally be picking up your trash. Now, people who have advocated for turf have said so because they believe this deals a better playing experience for their kids and more opportunities. And I really think that's, those are excellent points. I want people to also acknowledge that we're putting at risk some other beautiful resources for our town and the kids in this neighborhood. My children, we spent, during lockdown, spent hours down by that brook, admiring and immersing ourselves in the natural world. And it was a lifeline for us. And I don't want to imply that one of those trade-offs are better than the other. I just want them acknowledged that some of these decisions will have impact on our neighborhood. Now, my final words may not make me any friends and frankly, may lose some friends. Please don't unfriend me on Facebook. I swear, I'm still a good person. I've been thinking a lot about some recent decisions that we've been making in town and that we've been making for the town and who we ask to make sacrifices and why. Decisions which are for the greater good of Milton and the greater good of our town, but have very specific and localized impacts on communities and neighborhoods. And we are never going to get away from making this decision. And I would even argue that the entire point of Town Meeting is that we come together as a town and make those decisions. What we have to do is start doing a better job of listening and listening to each other and making sure, and this is an important part, making sure that people feel heard. I have been told that the ship has sailed on turf. All right. As this project continues, what I would like, speaking on behalf of my precinct and the people that I represent, better visibility and transparency and that we really compassionately and empathetically listen to all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, a question, the gentleman in the shorts, did you want to speak? Yes, thank you. You recognize her.
Sorry. First-time caller, wait, long time. John Flakes, Precinct Ten, Town Meeting Member. I'm in shorts because I just came off the soccer field. I also am in favor of the additional appropriation. I also serve as the K through two soccer director for Milton Soccer. So that is our kindergarteners through second and third grade. Right now, if you have a young kid in the soccer program, you know that we utilize space in Canton. And that space is going away. So I think this body needs to understand what that means for our youngest kids, right? For kids who are, let me back up. So in the fall, we'll be able to manage this loss of access. In the spring, we won't. And what that means are serious caps to this program. So if you had a kid a couple of years ago that participated in the pre-K program, what we used to do is send out the link on a Friday, and it would fill in two hours. If you didn't get in in the two hours, you're not playing soccer for that season. We're going to go back to that situation. And what that means for parents who can't be at their computer at that point in time to sign their kid up in that two hours, you're out of luck. You're going to have to look at a program outside of town, possibly on turf, at anywhere between six and 10 times the cost of the Milton Soccer Program. So I think when we talk about access to fields and theorize around what's better, grass or turf, these delays in these decisions have a real impact and a real cost to some of our youngest families. So please, please vote to approve this appropriation. Thank you.
By the way, Mr. Flakes, I've got a bag of pennies and cones at home. Seriously, if I, come see me afterwards. I'm dying to get rid of these things, so, yes. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you. Winston Daley, Precinct Two, and also current Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. I would first like to say, this is way too low. I'm too tall for this. First, I would like to remind everyone that this is not a vote on whether you prefer grass or turf. This is a vote so that we have the funds so we are able to move forward when a decision is made by the state. Currently, the decision about the field sits with the State Environmental Protection Agency. That is why we are so delayed. We hope to be shovels in the ground over a year ago. This is a process that started before my term on the Parks Commission, and it continues. What I do want to speak to is the process and the great concerns for everyone here that this was not transparent. I'll say, when I started, this was the first thing on our desks, my first meeting at Parks. And we, I thought, had great communication with the neighborhoods. We made concessions to lighting. We made concessions to sound. We made concessions to footprint, which were changed. They were, we talked about it, Deb. And so we thought we were moving forward. We had multiple meetings with our consultants. Again, the question as we come that our consultant is somehow financially incentivized to create turf. We talked about Marblehead, which Nora brought up. If we look at Marblehead, we can see that Huntress, our consultant, recently installed a grass and turf field at one of their schools. Marblehead has multiple turf fields as well as grass. Milton, however, as you hear from the parents and the folks who run youth programs here, we are suffering. We have an incredible lack of space and field space. It starts with our schools. We're talking about building a new school. We do not have fields. It is very hard to maintain grass in all of our fields here, and we are losing multiple days and hours for activities. Grass fields, which our consultant shared with us, would cost us shutting down for three to six months every year to resaw it and take care of the fields, which would cost us time and money. Okay? This is not something that we came to lightly. We did not just decide to put turf down. We understand the concerns that folks have, particularly folks who did not like the process around Piattelli Field. And we feel that we've been very open at Parks and Rec about getting this installed and getting this done as soon as possible. But regardless of that, this vote is not about whether you like grass or turf. It is about us having the money available because our delay is going to cost us this money. And we won't be able to do anything. So that is what the vote is for, so that we have the funds ready to move as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Just a reminder, and for some of the new members, one of the etiquette things we try to observe in Town Meeting, actually across the Commonwealth, is to avoid use of personal names. Just, you could be complimenting a friend, but if it gets antagonistic, we could just, if you refer to the member, the prior speaker, the office, et cetera. I think Mr. Chinman, you were next, and then I think Ms. Milbauer and Mr. Fahy, and I think that's everybody. Mr. Chinman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct Two. I want to make a statement about where I'm coming from and then propose a motion to amend. Where I'm coming from is that this is not about who loves our kids more. It's not about who wants soccer to be played more. We all want a suitable and safe field at this location. I would add accessible to that, too, because the turf fields in Milton are fenced in and locked and are not accessible for use by the public. Suitable, safe, and accessible. We all want at least two of those things. And the only proposal on the table is a turf field. We voted in 2022 after Parks and Recreation adopted a turf field recommendation to fund a turf field. That's the only thing on the table. There is no proposal for a grass field right now. And as a prior speaker said, the 2022 Presentation to Town Meeting said that there was three options that the consultant was hired for: grass field, turf football field, and turf multi-use. And that based on the consultant's report, the Parks and Recreation Department, and considering multiple factors that they listed but did not explain, adopted the turf field multi-use option. There was never anything presented to Town Meeting. I went back and listened to the presentation twice in the past couple of days. There was never anything presented explaining There was never anything presented explaining why a grass field would not work. I heard the chair of the select board say tonight that he's no expert, but it wouldn't work. But it has never been looked into. Other towns have it. And we never seriously considered, and it was never mentioned to town meeting, what was wrong and how a grass field was considered and rejected. It didn't happen in 2022. And I voted for a turf field in 2022 enthusiastically. But things, new information has come up about hazards of turf fields, both environmentally, both as to safety, and I'm including toxicity from the turf field and also athletic injuries from a turf field. And turf fields are expensive. We're talking about spending over $2 million on this one field. So we have, it's important. We have, it's urgent. We have, it's expensive. And a fourth thing about it is that we're all going to live with this decision for a very long time. This field will be used throughout the childhoods of children who haven't even been conceived yet. We're going to be living with this decision for a long time. And those four things mean that we have to get this decision right. We have to get it right. And I have become queasy lately about whether our vote in 2022 was the right one. I'm not saying it was wrong. I'm saying I don't think options were adequately considered before we voted. They certainly were not adequately explained to us before we voted. And there's this thing in law called stare decisis. It means standing by a thing decided. And it's an important concept in the law. Stare decisis, it brings stability and predictability to the law, which are good things. But we all know, sometimes the Supreme Court overrules what it did. It rejects stare decisis on its prior decisions. And there's been a lot of ink and word spilled about when do you not follow stare decisis? And some of the factors when you don't consider stare decisis as controlling today is when there's new information, when the past decision really did not consider all alternatives. And I had a third one in mind, but it just escaped me. Oh, and when the, the prior decision wasn't explained adequately. It was just made, but there really was no adequate explanation given for that. And we have all three of those things here. We have new information about turf fields. There was no explanation given in 2022 on why a grass field must be rejected. Stare decisis here, I suggest, is not applicable. And we have to get this decision right. So I have a motion to amend that I hope will allow a middle ground and expeditiously. And the, the upshot of my motion is to take the green sheet as it stands and add some words at the very end that would say, and we're not, we're not ready tonight to decide between turf and grass. We don't have enough information. Grass has never been adequately explored. We don't have the information tonight to prefer grass over turf. But my proposal would be to add the language at the end of the green sheet that would say, and further provided that no expenditures of approved capital funding for the reconstruction of Lower Guile Field shall be made before either a town meeting or a special town meeting occurs subsequent to the May 2024 town meeting, this town meeting. And the intent of this is it would give grass a chance to be considered at the very next town meeting, not four years down the road, one chance at the next town meeting. Get an article before the body about grass as an alternative to the already approved turf. Get an article that would rescind the turf decision perhaps and substitute in grass if that's feasible and good and warranted. And if that article fails, if that article, the next town meeting fails and grass is not endorsed by this body, then we have, the funding is cleared tonight. It's all cleared for the turf. But it gives us a chance to consider, give grass a chance.
You have three minutes, sir.
And I'm told, maybe this information is wrong, I'm told if I even make this motion, the select board is pulling the green sheet. It's their way on the green sheet as it currently exists or no field at all, which is just hardball. I don't think that's, good governance is behind the motivation of that. Give grass a chance, one town meeting in the future to let a, a grass alternative be, to be proposed and debated. Somebody said it's been debated enough. No, it hasn't. Grass has never been debated in this body. It wasn't part of the 2022 presentation. And the neighbors have legitimate concerns about this turf field. And if you voted no in the special election because you thought the select board was trying to cram something down Precinct 7's throat, and you're not willing to let the neighbors be heard in one town meeting from tonight on grass, then I think there's something wrong with that reasoning. Give grass a chance. So, Mr. Moderator, I submitted language previously. I would move to amend the green sheet to add the language that I proposed to the end of the green sheet language for Article 4.
Is there, there's a second. Madam War Committee Clerk, could you put up the language so the members can see it? Mr. Chinman, does this match your recommendation down at the bottom or your motion to amend?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that's it.
That matches. Thank you, Mr. Fundling. Very good. We've now had a motion made and seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion to amend? Ms. Agostino, you are first up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DiTullio Agostino, Chair of the Commission on Disability and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I had mentioned previously, and I made you aware that we do have a commissioner here who has expertise. And now with this discussion, the American with Disabilities Act concerns would be, might possibly be met. The discussion would be best heard now. So I rise to support the amendment because the American with Disabilities Act of 1990 and Title II mandates all Milton facilities, including this field, be ADA compliant. So the accessibility I'm talking about is different from the accessibility that I just learned about tonight. I had not even realized the field was going to be locked up. The, there is no funding. Everyone who's been involved with playgrounds and parks, and the Park Department should certainly know this, when Shields Field was funded and built, the ADA coordinator for the town, who was the building commissioner, would not allow it to be open. And I found out by a frantic park commissioner calling me to say, it, it's really expensive to make it accessible to someone in a wheelchair or someone with a walker or any other disability. So it's very sad to have to keep getting up and point out the needs for the disabled and that if those needs aren't met, it's not a matter of suing the town, it's a matter of just filing a legal complaint with the U.S. Justice Department. It's a little form. It's very simple. So I'd like to recognize, or have you recognize, Natalie Belmar Elfer, is how I've known her. And then I would rise to ask another question based on what she explains. Oh, there's a CMR 521. I think she can explain that part.
Is Ms., yeah, Ms., by prior permission, Ms. Elfer made herself known to me. Is Ms. Elfer here? Yes, ma'am. If you'd please come down to the microphone.
My name is Natalie Belmar Elfer. I am a member of the Commission on Disability. I'm also living in Precinct 8.
Thank you.
So what Ms. Agostino was mentioning is the fact that...
Just speak closer to the mic. Thank you.
Like this?
Yes, that's great.
Yeah. Is that the fact that this field would not be ADA accessible. The ADA guidelines from the ADA 2010 and the Massachusetts Building Code 521 CMR kind of requires the fact that this field be accessible by everyone, including members that are in wheelchairs or in walkers or, or blind. And this ramp that is currently existing is not adequate. So I hope that the funding that you guys are looking forward to include money to renovate this ramp and make it completely ADA compliant. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, thank you.
No, that's it.
And then your follow-up, Ms. Agostino?
Mr. Moderator, Diane DiTullio Agostino. I don't like repeating my name, but we're supposed to do that. Precinct 9, Chair of the Commission on Disability. I would also point out that Natalie is a licensed architect whose expertise has been amazing assistance. In fact, the first meeting she attended, I did not tell the ADA coordinator, building inspector at the time, that she was a licensed architect and that she was a professor at Wentworth. So she quietly started looking at plans, and I will never forget the Mr. Prondax eyes. And all of a sudden, he looked at her and he goes, what do you do for work? And so...
Ms. Agostino, if we could...
Yeah. So, so having her expertise and her being shy, she didn't mention her background, which I think is important with my next question.
Yes.
I'd like town council to advise whether or not the field could legally be used if it's all built and there has been no ADA accessible access to it because there's not going to be any more parking down there. You can't drive down there. The Commission, Conservation and Commission informed everyone of that a year ago at one of the sidewalks. So the laws, the ADA Act was of 1990. However, Ms. Belfer did bring up, it was amended, so the ADA of 2010 rules and regulations, Title II, which because we're a municipality, we are legally obligated to have all of our facilities, as I mentioned previously, accessible to the disabled. And 521 CMR, she also mentioned, these are all the laws that protect the disabled. And it would be really sad to spend over $2 million on something and have the U.S. Justice Department fine us.
So could we, if you could just state the pithy, short version of your question. Ask town council if we can build a field that is non-compliant with...
No, you could build it. You could build a grass or...
And then what's your question?
However, like the Shields one, you could not legally use it until it is accessible. And we have no funding to, or design to make it accessible. And I also will add, it's not just about walking or getting there. It was erroneously mentioned tonight that pulmonary, or that disabilities are not caused by the artificial turf. I personally was disabled and I'm, I shouldn't have to even bring up the fact of any of my medical conditions, but I, it seemed to always have to bring it up because nobody wants to hear about disabilities. Children with asthma, those with other pulmonary sensitivities to chemicals, I was disabled last summer outside, outside the fencing of the park. So that's an ADA question regarding what happens, not with the grass aspect, but with the chemicals. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair Wells, do we have a legal question here? Can you answer that or...
So we might be able to help you with that, Mr. Moderator.
But if you want to, do you want to address the body?
Yeah.
Yes, you're, you're recognized, Chair Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've sat and listened to many things tonight. The architect, Mr. Huntress, is here, who, who is retained by the park commissioners. I'd ask if the body were just a lot, I've heard, he's been before, I don't even know how many times he's been to town, how many meetings or committees he's been before. I see Mr. Cannon looking at me. He, he's well-versed in this and had many hours for his body, just as one would be permissible to allow him to speak.
Well, can he, can he answer this ADA question of...
I believe so, sir. He designed it.
You can. There you are, sir. All right, thank you. If you'll just state your name before the body, and you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the body, my name is Chris Huntress. I'm a licensed landscape architect in Massachusetts. We've been practicing since 1999. It was my office that designed the plans for the field, the walkways, the viewing areas and such that surround them. I stamped those plans as a licensed landscape architect, and I'm the one that's responsible for ADA accessibility and to confirm that. The plans, in my opinion, meet the criteria of ADA in Massachusetts Architectural Act of Sport. And I would feel fully confident of them going into construction the way they're designed right now. Having said that, I'm more than happy to meet with your Commission on Disabilities and review any concerns that they may have with regard to the plans and whatever issues or questions they have. This is the first time I've, I've heard of that question this evening, so I can't speak to it directly, but I'd be happy to meet with them.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're still talking about the motion to amend. Ma'am, I think you... We'll pause for a sec. Town council, do you have any area of expertise on ADA compliance here?
I'm not sure I have anything substantive to add beyond what the designer just said. I mean, if there's an allegation that in some respect the design runs afoul of some provision of the ADA theoretically, could that be the basis of a legal challenge? Yeah, I guess, yeah, theoretically. Obviously, there are instances in which, notwithstanding challenges like that, you know, owners will invoke, you know, certain exemptions or, or, you know, circumstances can justify, it's, it all is very context-dependent and, and I'm, I'm not sure what to add beyond what the designer said. I'm not familiar personally with all the particulars of the design of the project, and I'm not aware of any, any, you know, issue with respect to the design in terms of ADA compliance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Melo. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you. Rachel Posar, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I have a question that I hope will inform my decision on this motion to amend along with those of others. I was wondering, Mr. Moderator, if you could request a representative from the park commissioners to explain. It sounded to me like the plan is currently under review by the state, given the challenge, and that is part of the delay. So the, the plan for the turf is under review. My question is about how long is that review anticipated to take? Thinking about the next time we have a town meeting, that's likely to be October of this year. So I'm curious as to the extent to which the, this motion would prolong the timeline of the field versus if the green sheet were accepted as originally written. Thank you.
Understand. We have an expert from the Parks Commission. Yes, sir.
I will quickly say we do not have a timeline for when we'll get, get an answer. The state takes into consideration, they came to the site, they've done their testing, they did not give us any update as to when. So we are simply in a wait-and-see mode. Can I ask a question? Does this, can I get some clarification? So this is saying if we do get approved, we have to come back to town meeting before we can put this out to bid to determine how we're going to handle the money?
It says where you're off, the town meeting is authorizing the borrowing of the money is not authorizing actually expending any of the funds. So if you had to go spend money to be able to come back with a grass versus turf alternative out of these funds, my interpretation is you're not, the town is not authorized to spend those funds from this capital... is you're not, the town is not authorized to spend those funds from this capital budget.
So if we were to get approval, if this goes through, if we were to get approval tomorrow to put the turf in, meaning we've gone through Conservation Commission, we've gone through the state, everybody has said it's okay to install turf, we still have to come back to the next town meeting before we can use any of the money?
Yes. If this motion to amend, Mr. Chinman?
No. The intent is that if at the next town meeting, nothing happens on this, it's done. If at the next town meeting or special town meeting, there is no further article about grass versus turf, we've already approved the money in this for expenditure of the, for expenditure to put in a turf field. It just has to wait until after the next town meeting to see if the next town meeting has an article that addresses grass versus turf. If, if no article gets made, or if an article gets made and gets rejected, we're right, we're right back here. And all we've done is we've lost some months, perhaps. We don't even know if we've lost any months because we don't have a timetable on the approval from the state. So there's the potential of lost time. There's maybe no lost time, but there's no need to come back if town meeting does not, at its very next meeting, make a different decision about grass versus turf.
Okay. I think that, I think you've answered the question then. Is Mr. Daley, is that right?
I'm more confused than when I walked up here.
Okay.
I don't know what you said.
So I'll restate.
(Applause)
What Mr. Chinman is saying is if you accept his amendment, we'll approve the borrowing of the money, and town meeting has now said, okay, you're ready to go spend. And if by the time we have a next special, because we often have a special in the fall, if an article comes back with a different proposal, then that would presumably authorize the expenditure of the funds you're authorizing tonight. If town meeting is not presented with an alternative, then the timeline is satisfied, and in that fall town meeting, you'd then be authorized to go expend the money. So if an article comes, we'll debate about whether to spend. If no article comes, you're authorized to spend the money we approved tonight. Did that help?
Okay, so if no one submits an article about our spending, we can spend it?
That's right. That is right. Okay.
Vote on.
Now, anyone else wish to speak to this motion to amend? I think, yes, the gentleman there?
Hi, I'm Larry Johnson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I'm supporting the amendment. You know, I voted for this two years ago. I vaguely recall voting for it. There's a lot of articles that come up, as we all know. But it was a, you know, anybody in Precinct 4 or anyone in town, I think, can agree that we need better fields, more fields, more, more playing fields, that there's definitely a need for this. I just, at the time, I don't recall voting for turf versus grass. I don't believe, I believe the amendment, I mean, the article was for a new field and for building lights and, you know, refining it and giving us the additional playing field that we require. But I really don't recall voting for turf versus grass. And maybe that's on me. Maybe I didn't read the article closely enough. But I do, so for that reason, I think Mr. Chinman's amendment is a good one. I think it makes a lot of sense for us to give this a little bit more thought, see what the EPA comes back with. If the EPA comes back with a recommendation that, yeah, this is fine, it's not going to have any effect on the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood, it's not going to have any effect on the flooding, then I'd be, I'd still be in support of my vote two years ago, and I'd be, you know, in support of voting for this again, or not voting for it again, as you described, just doing nothing at all and letting it pass, letting the project move forward. But I would love to have a little bit more time to learn a little bit more about this. I'm mostly concerned about the environmental, environmental impact, you know, the, the arguments in, you know, in favor of what the toxicity and things like that, those kind of make a lot of sense. They don't seem to, it doesn't seem like toxicity is much of a concern to me. But I am a little, I am very much concerned with the flooding of the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood. I spent a lot of time there. It's a beautiful park. It's a, it's a gem. I strongly urge anyone to, to take a walk down there at some point. It's a really beautiful part of town. And to do anything to damage that would be upsetting to me. So that's it. I'm voting. And I mean, I'm urging everyone to vote in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the blue, hang on, Ms. Agostino, the blue shirt, did you want to speak on the motion to amend? Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Crissim. I'm Park Director. So my head is spinning here. So if the EPA comes back tomorrow and approves it, what happens? Approves the project. Because they are way, they are so late on this decision. We expect it really soon, not in months.
Back to the original statement. If someone decides, one of the boards or a citizen's petition submits an article that would be presented at the next town meeting, then we'd discuss the expenditure of the funds, I assume, in that article. If they don't, then we, you'd be authorized at that next special to expend the funds. But if EPA comes back tomorrow and approves it, if this passes, the town could not expend the funds to start building the turf field.
The $400,000 or the other money that was approved? Everything?
By interpretation, Mr. Milano, you'd say the whole 2.4, because you either 2.4 or the 400.
Just...
Just the 400?
No.
We'd spend 200 on this.
All right.
Mr. Milano, could you come up and explain what would happen if EPA approves this tomorrow?
So the town would have access to $2 million previously approved. It would, if this motion were approved, not have access to the final $400,000 to enable us to sign a contract and get the project underway until the next town meeting, whenever that were to be scheduled.
So you would not have sufficient funds to proceed?
Yes.
Is that clear, Mr. Dism? Okay. Now, our rules say that no one can speak twice before everyone has spoken once. So does anyone else want to speak on the motion to amend? Yes, sir. Mr. Kiernan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Kiernan, Precinct 6, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the Conservation Commission. And I'd like, just for clarity purposes, I give you a little bit of background. The Conservation Commission considered this at a number of meetings between March of 2023 and October of 2023. So in terms of transparency, we've had a number of public meetings. And I should say that all of those that participated were bright, articulate, well-intentioned, and passionate. And there were people both in favor of the turf field and people in favor of the grass field. A couple of things that I'd like to point out is, one, we did do an alternatives analysis. In fact, we asked, Mr. Huntress here, can you tell us what it would take to put in a grass field and keep it up to, up to speed? And he answered that. And we did consider it, and we considered things like aeration, the use of fertilizers, et cetera. Most of the concern for the Conservation Commission was two things really, toxicity and heat, heat into Pine Tree Brook and the toxicity. So what we did is we revised the plans and came up with a plan that was acceptable to four out of the seven members. It was a four to three vote. And what we did is we redirected the water coming from the field that admittedly could be heated for some period of time and took it away from Pine Tree Brook so that it would not heat the brook, which in turn could heat the Nipponset, which is the cold water fishery. We were very concerned with that. And so what we did is we redirected the water into the wetland so that it would sit there for a considerable length of time. And yes, we do have the number of hours that it would take and the number of days before it actually gets to Pine Tree Brook. So it would return to ambient temperature. The second area of concern was the toxicity. So what we did is we, instead of dumping the water coming from the field directly into the brook, we redirected it into a trench that runs the entire length of the field, into a stone trench so that it would spread. And then we had certain sumps, a number of sumps introduced, and in back of those sumps, we put in three layers of filters. So we had a sump filter, well, we had the entire trench as a filter. We had the sump as a filter. We added three fabric layers as filter so that if, in fact, there were any kind of micro shedding from the fibers, that they would be captured in the sump and in the three rows of filtration. After that, it doesn't, doesn't go into the brook, it goes into the wetlands. And a wetland is like a sponge. It's, what it does, it filters the water. That's what wetlands do. That's why we try to protect them. So what we've done is we've protected the Pine Tree Brook and the neighborhood and the, and the community and the environment from any possibility of filtration, I mean, of that micro shedding. So we, we looked at this with great care. Now it's in the hands of DEP. And when DEP, it's either going to go forward or not. But these factors were considered, discussed, very articulate, very passionate members, with great expertise. We had a ton of public meetings. I know it wasn't this meeting, but these factors have been considered. And if I, I should say, in support of Mr. Huntress and Mr. Crissim, one of the things that we approved was handicapped access. It's on the plans. And so that, that's why we approved it. So I, I hope I'm not giving you more questions than answers. But I would rise as a, as a Town Meeting Member, not as Chair of the Conservation Commission, but I would oppose this amendment because assuming that DEP approves it, let's get it done.
So does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to amend? Otherwise, I'll recognize Ms. Agostino, and then we'll go to the vote. Oh, sorry. I missed, I'm sorry, ma'am. I missed, I'm sorry, I missed you, Mr. Turner.
Darnell Turner, Precinct 1. Thank you. Because you explained exactly my question I had here. All the work was done. EPA Commission has just told you the work was done. They compared it. They studied it. They figured out. We paid somebody $100,000 to give us the answers to bring to this town meeting. It was done. To put it off and say, oh, let's hold this off because somebody, you know, give grass a chance and everything else, great slogan. But we have other things coming down the road that we're going to need to get done. These fields need to be built. So let's get it done. Let's vote no on this amendment. Let's go ahead, vote yes on getting this whole capital budget spending done. And let's get on to the next option. It's been done. Grass and, we tread stuff that we already tread over. So let's just get it done. Thank you.
Now, did I miss anyone else? No. All right, Ms. Agostino, you have 2 minutes and 50 seconds left out of your 10. Please, use your wisely.
Takes 50 seconds to say my name. Diane DeTulio.
That was a mic drop, wasn't it?
Diane DeTulio Agostino, Precinct 9, Chair of the Commission on Disability. I won't drop it again. It's still working. Unfortunately, I have emails, and when I was at the Conservation Sidewalk, I was pointed at the existing ramp from where the baseball field is. The ramp is 138 feet long, part of it. The other part is 100 feet long. So while our architect has looked at it and other ADA compliant individuals have looked at it, all we've heard here, and I have it in writing from even the town manager, that that ramp is the access down to this playing field. The walkways in the field down below may be accessible. But it's also not legal to be parking at those wetlands. That's a CONCOM issue. So the ramp cannot be longer than 30 feet at any point. It has to zigzag. Many of you are familiar with ADA compliant ramps. You see them that they stop a certain way, you have a platform to rest, and then you go down further. As far as Town Council's comment or response or answer that anything could be legally challenged, this is not, you don't need a lawyer. The U.S. Justice Department oversees the American Disability Act violations. It's a form very easy to fill out. You can also look at the penalties involved. So the process is a simple one to protect the rights of the disabled. Because, yeah, the field and the walkways were the ones mentioned, has ADA compliant. But I was specifically, and I have the town emails from the town manager, that the ramp that goes from the baseball field all the way down, which was built years ago, would be the ADA compliant accessibility. And I spent a lot of time checking it's not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, by the way, on a motion to amend, it only requires a majority vote, even though this is a capital item that requires a two-thirds. So, Mr. Harrington, are we ready to put up a poll? And I'll be looking for a majority vote. So all those in favor, are we ready for the poll?
We're having it now.
Please stand by. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please vote yes. Opposed, please vote no. Obstain, do nothing, or press abstain.
Mr. Moderator, one second.
Yes. You know, I did forget something. Can we, can we pause the vote? I forgot a protocol item. Excuse me. Can you close the poll? My mistake in my rush, I forgot to ask both the Select Board and the Warrant Committee for their opinion. So my, my mistake. So, Warrant Committee, your opinion on this motion to amend?
Thank you. The Warrant Committee took this up and deliberated and voted. It was unanimous that the Warrant Committee is not in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. And Select Board, your opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The same with our board. We took this up, and the Select Board unanimously is not in favor of this motion.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go back to the vote. If we could open up the poll. You are now revoting, because I forgot a protocol item. We always check in with the Submitting Board and the Warrant Committee on a motion to amend. My mistake. So we're revoting. Ignore what, we'll white clean what you voted on before. Now, if you are in favor of the motion to amend, press yes. Opposed, press no. Obstain, press abstain. Are we starting the count?
It's going.
It's going. Okay. There, it is down there. Thank you. The motion to amend fails by a vote of 204 noes to 24 yes. We'll now return to the green sheet as printed on the green sheets, and we'll put that back up on the screen. Does anyone now wish to speak to the language in the green sheet? So the article, the recommendation as now printed. Yes. Ms. Milbauer, no? Oh, yes, you do wish. Okay, Ms. Milbauer, then Mr. Fahy, and that's it? Yes, okay. Ms. Milbauer.
We're back to the original. Hi. Deborah Milbauer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I'm really, really anxious and I'm shaking. A lot of you are my friends, and I'm going to try not to cry. I really care deeply about all of you on both sides of the aisle, and so taking a position right now is making me very anxious. And I hope after we leave here tonight, we can still be friends and agree to disagree as the clergy who gave the start, kicked us off for the night said, said. So I'm hoping that we can all just get along. But I am very nervous about this, so here I go. So I appreciate what Nora said. I too support the sports programs. I'm an athlete myself. I play very old lady feel hockey on turf. I still do. I played D1 hockey at BU. That's how I ended up in Boston. Playing on turf has been my whole life. I also am a public health professor. I also am a public health professor. I also am an abutter to this project. And so my life was turned upside down three years ago when this first came across my radar. And as a town meeting member, I originally voted to allocate money for the program because Huntress had told us, oh, don't worry, this is the good kind of turf because the infill doesn't have PFAS. And this is before I knew anything. So I said, oh, great, because I was worried about the PFAS. I said, great. And then it came to my attention that there is an enormous wealth of research, there's volumes of research and data that actually questions the public health and the environmental, the environmental and the public health impact on our community, on our kids, on ourselves, on, on the wetlands, on the conservation land, on flooding. It's, and I wasn't prepared to speak, so my remarks are very scattered. So I appreciate your patience and your forgiveness, because this is a little scattered, but I have a lot of talking points. Firstly, with all due respect to Mr. Kiernan, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, just to correct a few inaccurate things he said. The Conservation Commission's role is to narrowly decide on issuing permits for a project which is before them. In the town of Milton, if you do a construction project that's by the town, you don't have to go through Planning Board. Again, all of this I just learned in the last two years. And so the only permission that the Parks Department had to go through was Conservation Commission. And the reason why it had to go through Conservation Commission is because the property abuts wetlands and conservation land. That is wetlands and conservation land, as, as he said. And so they had a very narrow authority to decide just on the Wetlands Protection Act. And would this violate the Wetlands Protection Act? And what we're, what, what has not been said tonight is the reason why we have to swap out the ARPA money and why we can't spend it by June, and why we're waiting for the Department of Environmental Protection to rule, is because what Mr. Kiernan said, with all due respect, is the plan is to divert the plastic toxic chemical runoff directly into the wetlands. And the appeal to the state is to say, this is a violation of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. So putting aside what you think about turf and sports and all of that, this is, the, the plastic, there has been so much research done, and I appreciate that people have different views on this. I understand that we can disagree, we can agree to disagree on the science, but the fact of the matter that there is new research being published constantly, peer-reviewed journal, peer-reviewed articles in very reputable journals all over the world, not just the United States. Last week, Colorado banned artificial turf. Last week, a few days ago. The governor came out and signed banning. Why? So the Conservation Commission did not have an analysis and thoughtful comparative analysis on natural grass versus turf. That wasn't their role. Their role was to hear the presentation by the parks to issue permits. That was it. There wasn't any consideration of youth athlete risk. So there's increased rates of ACL tears and, and increased rates of concussion and heat stroke and infected abrasions from the turf on your skin. And I could tell you, I've had a lot of turf burns over the years that leave scars when it gets infected by the turf. That wasn't their role. That wasn't their role to talk about what's the impact on the environment. When you put plastic on top of natural grass, you're suffocating the ecology underneath that, that plastic. Now, I, I understand we really want the turf, and it's really good for the sports programs, and I don't dispute that. In fact, what I started to say is I support the sports programs. My kids played sports, I play sports. I actually also, another role I had with the town is working around youth substance use prevention and mental health work for many years in the town. I now do it voluntarily. Sports programs are really good for kids. No one is disputing that the town has a shortage of fields. I, I want to help the town alleviate the shortage of fields, and so I have two suggestions. One is, I think that with all, if, if the Select Board wouldn't mind me making this request now, and I was not prepared to do this tonight at all, I really think that the town, that the Select Board should appoint an artificial turf study committee. I understand that we want to get this done fast, but the ramifications are very serious because we're putting in investment, many millions of dollars, when states all across the country are banning it. Cities and towns all over Massachusetts are banning. If I was prepared, I would read off the list of many, many cities and towns. So let me just say a couple of other things.
Just, ma'am, you have three minutes?
Okay. The Board of Health generously offered to hold hearings on this, but were held up. I'm not sure why, and so it would be really great to revisit that offer that the Board of Health would hold a hearing, because we have disagreements, and it's not going to get hashed out here at Town Meeting. It's not really the place. We need to have an appropriate study committee. And again, with all due respect to Chair Kiernan, the Conservation Commission very narrowly ruled, and we're waiting for the Department of, the Department of Environmental Protection to say, yes, it's violation of the Wetlands Protection Act. And I spoke to several other Conservation Commission members in other cities and towns. I've spoken to a bunch of environmental folks, and they were shocked to hear that the Milton Plan was to direct the runoff directly into the wetlands. They'd never, nobody had ever heard it before. It's very unusual and surprising.
Ma'am, you have two minutes.
Okay. The Massachusetts Association of Boards of Health are, right now, are contemplating, and I can't speak for them, it's not public, this is just sort of hearsay, so I, I acknowledge it might not be accurate, but they're actually, the Massachusetts Association of Boards of Health are considering coming out with a statement saying that they have serious concerns about the health and safety of artificial turf. The other things I'll say is, I would love for the Planning Board to offer the Parks Commissioners a non-binding courtesy review of the plans. Right now, there's absolutely no parking for the plans. I live in the neighborhood where, where all the cars park on conservation land, and the Conservation Commission actually right now is working with the neighbors to get a no parking sign, because all those cars are parked literally on the grass on the conservation land. And so there's literally no parking. And you put in a field that's actually going to be used all the time, whether it's grass or turf, there needs to be a, a plan.
Ma'am, you have a minute, if you could start to wrap up?
Okay. The last thing I'll say is, to quote Al Gore, this is a very inconvenient truth. Turf is so appealing, I get it. I totally get it. But there's, but there's such a big, a bigger challenge than just our narrow sports programs. I think that what we should do is actually do a town-wide bonding and redo all of the fields, and I'll tell you why. The reason why grass won't work, and I, I feel uncomfortable every time someone says, oh, we tried grass, it doesn't work. The reason grass won't work is because the under, underneath lower guile is reconstructed, is, is constructed incorrectly.
Ma'am, it's time to wrap up?
Thirty more seconds. The runoff will never work. Turf won't work or grass won't work. It has to be reconstructed from underneath. I think this is a huge misunderstanding. So yes, the Parks Commissioners have put in buckets of money over the years, but the turf won't, the natural grass won't ever work unless you actually reconstruct from underneath. So I support the reconstruction of this field, because we can't get natural grass or turf without the reconstruction, actually. I do think it's a poor investment in plastic. People forget this is plastic. Plastic is made of petroleum.
Ma'am, please.
Okay.
If you could wrap up, no, if you could just conclude right now, please.
Okay. So I know we're not ready. It's like climate change 30 years ago. Nobody's ready to really say, shit, we have to give up our turf, right? We don't want to give up our gas-guzzling cars.
Ma'am, please. I think you're done.
Thank you so much for, for hearing me out. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Fahy, did you want to speak? You were next, and then the two gentlemen, one or two, Mr. Fahy's next, and then you two. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be quick. Sean Fahy, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member and Member of the Planning Board. I think we've heard from many people tonight on this topic, and I just wanted to offer a couple of, a couple of points. Towns far and wide are using turf. Our kids are playing on them. Whether we like it or not, they're going to other towns, and they're playing on turf. The Conservation Commission approval is not a low standard. It's not. If they approve it, generally, it's been tested thoroughly to get their approval. Second point, turf is growing as an industry. It's growing at a pace of 5.8% annually. So what does that mean? In 2023, the turf industry was 10.4 billion a year. In 2032, it's expected to be 17.3 billion a year. So although there may be concerns that we've heard from the body tonight, obviously, if the industry is growing at that pace, and that's market research that's available for anybody to look at, the concerns aren't so significant. I ask you to vote in favor. I'm in favor of this approval. And last point, as the days, the weeks, the months, and the years go by, it seems like we find more and more opportunities to disagree. We can't even agree on turf versus grass. Let's, let's not have this be one more issue that we disagree on. Let's get past this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, everybody. Mark Croninger, Precinct 7. Thank you. My wife texted me, how's the first meeting going? I said, I'll see you in September. But it's an honor to be here. I just wanted to say something that really resonated with me with two people who spoke. Obviously, I wasn't here when the turf whole debates went on a while ago, and I had kids that played a lot of sports on the fields out here, and used to come home with little things stuck to them, and me and my wife would always be like, what's that all about? But this sounds, you know, like it's been well researched. That said, I think a core issue here, and Sean alluded to it a minute ago, and there was a, a gentlewoman from Precinct 4, I think, and Mr. Chinman, who both brought up the fact that it re, it breeds resentment when people feel things are forced on them and they can't be heard. And I think that this town has gone through a huge cycle of that over the course of the past six months, where sometimes we feel unempowered. Full divul, disclosure, I'm from Precinct 7, the infamous Precinct 7, and we feel like, you know, honestly, we had some stuff thrown our way, but I can completely relate with the person from Precinct 4. I can't remember her name. And I would, on any of these kind of big decisions that are going to impact people's neighborhoods and their livelihoods and their whatnot, I think, okay, if this turf thing passes, like, it seems like maybe it's a fait accompli. I don't know if it is or isn't, but we should take great care to maybe have some sort of subcommittee. I don't know how this all works, but to work with the people in that neighborhood that was discussed, and figure out ways before this plan is finalized that we could mitigate some of the impacts that they're fearing on their neighborhood, whether it's, you know, pulling 700 baseballs out of the, the brook or whatever it is. Hopefully, none of those were off my son. He used to be a pitcher. But in any event, kind of really paying more attention to how things impact people when they feel like they're getting stuck on them. And I think maybe that could start to maybe heal what's going on in this town right now. Let people be heard, and then work with ways to mitigate things that don't have to be in concrete. I just wanted to say that, because I thought there were some really nice points made earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, you're recognized.
Hi, my name is Booba, Precinct 1. Just want to check, is this recorded? Sir, is this recorded?
Pardon me?
Is this on TV?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I told my kids I'll be on TV, but they're sleeping now. They were excited, they were excited. So we, I coach kids, I play at sport, I still play, I mean, they put me in the over 40 groups. I'm not in the 40 yet, but I've heard about this story. I think the discussion has been going for many years. I think a lot of people are just tired. But I think it's, to me, it's actually even bigger than turf or grass, because I think there's more issues. So for instance, I have a feeling that maybe Precinct 4, some people in those areas might not want people coming. There may be other issues. I think those would be proper issues to discuss, but going against, talking about scientific or scientific research or work that's been done, I think many times we can say without, without disrespect or anything, but I find it very disrespectful that people put a lot of hours into this and it just is missed without even some time reading the documents. I think we should be respectful of the work that's been done by experts and consider those. And also, the other thing I noticed, this is my first time, so, you know, might be birthing pains, but the second part is, I hear a lot of fallacies in the sense that we make statements that are a little bit empty. So for instance, a bill has passed in Colorado, but the article is very clear. It doesn't apply to residential areas or recreational areas like golf, golf courses or parks. So we can say a bill has passed to ban turf, but then what exactly is going on? It's not about these cases, so it doesn't apply to our case. So we have to really be mindful, and especially being recorded, I don't want my kids to be like, what was going on? So I think we have to discuss, maybe do more work with the community and look at really what's the other issue. But turf or no turf, I don't, I think that debate is done. There's turf everywhere. So one big argument is the environment. The biggest issue with environment is water. Water is limited. So now we want to put grass and waste more water? That doesn't even add up. So we, there's everywhere in the world, FIFA is putting turf everywhere. So there's a thing that are proven, and then it's working. So we don't have to go back with that. I, I'm really tired of driving one hour everywhere just for the kids, and I have three kids. It adds up. So please, let's vote yes, and let's move on.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Firs, are you going to speak, or? Yes, you are. Okay, yes, sir.
David Cornish, Precinct 10. I represent a, a family that is very concerned about that accessibility of that wheelchair ramp. And I just want to make sure before I vote that, that, that it will be up to code.
So your question is, will the ramp?
I heard, I heard the, the architect say that he would meet with the disability people and make sure, I just want to make sure that they really will, make sure that wheelchair ramp is up to code before they...
Which, which code, then?
Up to disability code.
Thank you. Well, yes, sir, Mr. Huntress?
Yes, again, Chris Huntress with Huntress Associates. As the landscape architect that stamped the plans, I can confirm that the plans, in my opinion, meet ADA and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. My offer was to your disabilities commission, if they have additional questions or concerns, I'm always happy to meet with them, but I've been available for years on this topic through the Park Commission, and this is the first I heard about it tonight.
You have a follow-up, Mr. Cornish?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Firs?
Hi, Brian Firs, Precinct 10. I'm really sorry to prolong this on something that isn't about the fields, but there are 13 items or line items up here, and I had a question on one. I'm not going to make a change, I promise. But I had a question, and it's something that I, I would like the Capital Planning Committee and Warrant Committee to think about for future May town meetings. It has to do with the construction, roadway construction line item. That line item is always a million dollars, and I have a vague recollection from many years ago about hearing why it's always a million dollars. But as a driver in this town, and more importantly, as a biker in this town, the roads are not safe in many parts of our town. So I'd like to understand how many miles of road we have. I don't need this tonight, by the way, so I'd love to have it, have it before the end of town meeting, but I don't need it tonight. But I would love to know how many miles of road we have, how many miles of road need to be repaired, and what the projected capital costs of repairing those roads are. Because my estimate, based on being someone who influences a lot of shopping centers and parking lots, is that we are never going to get there, and I think we need a plan. So I would like to try to get those questions answered before the end of town meeting, but I have no objections to the million dollars for this year. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Agostino, before you get up, you've had plenty of time to speak tonight. I think it's...
The gentleman asked about the accessibility of the area.
No, ma'am, I think...
The project's on lock.
Ma'am, I think, I think, I think everyone is, now, my judgment is that the body is ready to vote. You've had lots of time tonight. Oh, okay, folks. I'm sorry, I don't think any minds are going to be changed. So I'd like to go to a vote now. It's eight, it's 10:45, and we've gotten consent agenda, but not much ready. So this now requires a two-thirds vote, because we're doing capital bonding. So all those in favor of the green sheet in front of you, and as, as up on the screen, please signify by voting yes, opposed, no, abstain, press abstain or say nothing. Or vote nothing. I haven't declared the vote. I declare a two-thirds vote, 199 to 20. Now, we typically stop at 10:30. Do we have a voice vote in favor of adjourning for tonight and resuming tomorrow night at 7:30 PM?
Yes.
A second?
Yes.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you. See you tomorrow night, 7:30.